We move on to goal time. I just go back to goal one for a moment. So I guess I, I just wanna, so Jen, do you, it sounds like you think that we're done with goal one?
No, uh, I don't know, I don't think we're done with it. I'm not sure it is at the point it needs. At the level which should be one of our main goals for the year, but. Just one person. I mean, in other words, we started the process. The process was to make sure we're updated and have a process for the updated. Policies as they come through. Not necessarily to go through every policy, but I think that's probably not a bad idea. But I'm not sure that it's at the level that it need. I mean, I guess, fine, stay as well. So I just don't know whether there are other more pressing things, but it, I mean, we can always have more than three goals.
So I know what you're asking about, like next year's goals. So it sounds to me like. We're not sure this will be a goal yet for next year. Right? And that we, you know, feel that we've met. Or the policy subcommittee feels that they've kind of met what we had for a goal this year. Whether it's a goal next year, it sounds like it still needs to be determined.
Yes, so the idea behind reviewing last year's goals. Is that all good goal setting starts with reviewing where you are now and the progress that you've made. So what we're doing right now is we're going through last year's goals. And then we'll come back to what do we think next year's goals.
Okay, good, thank you.
Wouldn't this one need to be rewritten? Cause the, the, the goal is to review all school committee policies. So. Either we need to rewrite it or we're doing new one, but it might make sense to actually.
I might suggest, and I'm jumping ahead to forming next year's goals, but that's okay. I might suggest that what happens is this actually becomes a charge of the policy subcommittee. That the full committee says to the policy subcommittee, okay, you need to go in and you need to develop protocols for the policy subcommittee. You have your policies, policies on policies, you have your policies to talk about policy adoption. What are your protocols for how things get updated? What are your protocols for the stor- the data storage online and the accessibility? So this may not be a school committee goal. This may be the school committee telling the policy subcommittee. This is what your charge should be for the year. Develop those protocols.
I, I have a question. These, these are all dated. So we know when they were reviewed and approved. Do you have like a standard amount of time that you suggest reviewing? Like older policies or is it just?
So what we would suggest is, one, um, we always send out policy. Um, bulletins, we always send a policy of updates. So make it part of the protocol for the. Whenever one of those comes out, you review everything that's in it and make sure those are up to date. Beyond that, I would say most committees, what they do is they'll start at A. And they'll take, once you're, once you have a full, your NEP code coding is in place and all of that. So you should be able to do it this way. Some committees can. But because your NEP encoding is all in place and you're mostly just making sure things are updated, I would say take it maybe. One or two sections at a time and go through it. One, how often does your policies subcommittee meet? Do you have a standing meeting?
There's an, the committee voted at a meeting last week to set standard, standing meeting schedules for subcommittees, but they haven't been established.
So when that happens, usually policy subcommittees will meet about once a month, all once every other month. What I would say is. As a policy subcommittee, a good way to review your manual is to take maybe two sections at a time. And because you're a two-member subcommittee, assign each person a section. And say, please go through and just make sure that there isn't anything that looks, you know, out of date. Um. You can cross-reference it with the MASC policy bulletins. But also what you're reviewing for is updated language, say your strategic plan changes. You want to make sure that if that needs to be reflected in any of the policies around like financial goals, things like that. That that gets, um, addressed. So I would say it's up to the policy subcommittee. Every like two years, I would say you should make it all the way through your entire manual. Just to be sure that there isn't anything else that you want to update. So with a smaller subcommittee, two people take two sections at a time and just go through. Two sections at a time and make sure that you're up to date. And then if you have to pause that while you do other immediate things, I know we have a bunch of policy recommendations that are going to be coming out in our next policy bulletin. Um, competency determination policies in there. There's another policy about the, the nurses. There's a whole bunch of policies coming up. So when those things take over, you can pause the review, but then pick it back up in the next set of meetings. So. Usually every one to two years, you should be reviewing the entire manual.
With all due respect, how many schools actually do that? That is a ton of work.
It is a ton of work, but I can tell you mine is doing it.
And it's, it's just, it's, it sounds fine, but it's a lot of work.
Yes, it, what I'm saying is not. Don't think of it like the massive policy manual review that MASC does where you're not sitting in every meeting and redlining every single policy. You're assigning a member of the policy subcommittee a section.
So you just review.
To review it. Yes, it's a, it's a high level.
Through a policy manual review.
Yes, this is not a policy manual review. This is housekeeping at this point. This is. Hey, we just updated the strategic plan and there are new fiscal goals in the strategic plan. Let's go into section D and make sure that our fiscal goals policy reflects the new. Um, strategic plan language. It's not the entire manual. Make sense?
But then if when the MASC sends off the bulletin of, these are the fourteen policies that we need to.
Yeah, like that.
That's the deeper dive.
And you say this one coming out.
Yes, there's one, um, we are currently, I am working on the competency, competency determination policy language right now. And I know Liz LeFond is working on another, there's a bunch of policies in the pipeline. Um, that we are talking with Desi right now to finalize the language on. And then that will come out, I believe by the end of August. Don't quote me on that. It will definitely be before you all need to turn. Your CD policies in November, et cetera, but you're currently working on that, yes.
So I guess I have a follow-on question to that because. I went through. And since. Like March of twenty twenty-three. MASC has recommended changes to a hundred and thirty-seven policies and some of them are like. Commas and some are substantive. So. I guess I would ask what your thoughts are on whether we should start this, like each person takes a section and we're just going through. Or do we take those policies and the recommendations that are coming in August as the focus for this year?
I would update the ones you absolutely one hundred percent need to update right now. Uh, because some of those are MGL language, some of those are, you know, guidance directly from Desi and there's dates attached to them. So I would start with. What we've put out as policy updates. And then once you feel like you've, you've got a handle on that, you're caught up on that, then you start the, you know. Think of it like you're not, you're blowing a lot at that point. You just want to keep everything level. When you need to address things, address things, but then everything else is sort of just maintenance. So don't do the, the. Multiple section review until you feel like you've got a handle on all the updates.
I think we, we did the I's, which is the big one, and the J's, that's the big one. I think the others are pretty. Kind of, they're not, the, the J's and the I's are the big. Lot of changes, like actual changes.
Yes, yes, one hundred percent.
That we still have one hanging out there, so. The problem is it still takes time. Like you gotta go through, you gotta compare, you gotta run it by the superintendent. It, it honestly. Whether it's a substantive change or it's a typo, it's almost like the same amount of time. Got it out, so.
So here's the thing too, is you can also ask our deal director to join a policies subcommittee meeting. If I would be at all helpful, by all means, just, you know. It is a lot of work.
Do you know how many coming, are coming at the end of August?
Um, no, I do not, because there were multiple things, multiple.
Different sections.
guidances that came from Dusty to us and we're working with Dusty now. I just checked my email. There was an update on the draft that I sent this morning, so.
And in the competency determination is going to be in there. So that. Might have a whole separate, right? And because that's probably something we need to discuss or that's going to be.
That was coming, we just.
That's just not a matter of adopting, that might be. I recommend, I don't know, I don't know what it's gonna say.
So it's mostly, I can tell you. The preview of the competency deter- competency determination policy. I either need more coffee or less. Um, probably more. Most of what you're going to get from us for the framework is the framework that Desi recommended. What you're going to have to do is you're going to have to go into your handbooks and your, um. Course requirements and pull that information into the policy. We generally, as a rule of thumb, we tell you not to. Add detail to policies that should actually be in handbooks and procedures and things like that. But Desi is requiring that level of detail in this policy. So we're going to give you a framework, but you should already be looking at. What the graduation requirements, the course completion requirements, excuse me, what the course completion requirements are for those core competencies. That used to be covered by M-PASS that now you need to put into this competency determination policy. We don't have to rewrite this. We just need to move the language over so it's clearer in the policy where they are. Which sounds easier than it. Most districts already have the information. It's just a matter of moving it over in the format that Desi.
That's the issue. It's whether we want it.
Yeah, we got the frame, we got the framework. Chose my words wisely.
Some of the terms are interchangeable.
Alright, so end of August, maybe.
End of August, beginning of September, because you guys are going to have to pass something by the end of October. End of October.
It's due in October.
But yes, it, right now I literally have a draft email and talking with Dusty. Um, just got back an email about my draft, so it will be soon. Okay, so your goal number two, let's talk about communications. You have a series of bullet points here. You're. What bullet points do you feel like were. Enacted this year? Do you feel like some of them are carryover? Let's talk about what the actual goal number two, what got accomplished and what you would like to accomplish in the result.
So we did create a subcommittee. You have a template for a monthly newsletter. We have, when we, when we have seen, uh. Changes on the website that we felt were necessary. Uh, the process we were using, uh, superintendent was to. Alert him. So John, I'm just bringing this up. I just want to make sure if it's not appropriate, but you know, through something that came to us or we noticed. We would then let John know of the, uh, needed edits to the website and then he would. Task that to the appropriate folks in his organization. So is that?
Yes.
Okay.
That worked out well, actually.
I think the, the meeting minutes, there's improvement needed. Uh, we did just pass a, a bunch of meeting minutes at our last meeting. But we have a new secretary who's Henry and so, uh. You know, he knows that it's his task to really improve on our ability to get minutes out in a more timely fashion. So the management of public comment. You know, we've been following the policy. Trying to adhere more maybe to the policy that's in place. Uh, we didn't talk about editing that at all. Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't mean to laugh, but, uh. Brian, Brian was the chair of this committee. Um, and what he wanted was a kind of a time clock. Cause one thing we do have an issue with is people adhering to the three-minute. So, um, I think we, we've done, you know, and with our previous chair, we were doing a good job of that. Um, but he was, he wanted a time clock that was visible, so he thought it might make that more. Help people adhere to it more than perhaps me have saying, you know, listen. You know, you have fifteen seconds or you're at three minutes, please stop. So it's really just helping people know where they are. As they're making public comment within that three minutes. So we have not enacted that. I know that, you know, Brian and I felt strongly around a teamwork building, uh, component for this. We, we thought about that for the retreat, but then we, it was changed just given what else we were doing and, and you know, you tailored your component with. Everything else we were trying to do at this meeting and that was fine. So I do think that may be something we want to think about going forward. In terms of surveys, I, I'm not sure where we were. I, I think Brian was in the, in the throes of creating another survey to be sent out. I'll have to follow up with him around where we are with that. And I, we didn't really talk about a specific plan to improve relationship with the local media, but, um. I've been trying to be very, uh, responsive to, to Lee's requests as needed. Um. So, you know, that'll be something we need to engage the local media on to see where we are and if needed improvements are, are still needed.
So when you say you have your public comment policy, are you also reading that at the beginning of public comment?
No, and that was suggested at a, one of the previous meetings, and I think that's an important thing that we'll, we'll do.
So having, I, I find it very helpful, both on my committee and for the committees that I work with, um, to have a public comment statement when you open public comment. And it's honestly, it's not something you need to write out of, you know, you don't need to pull it out of the air. It's literally your public comment policy. Public comment is, um, twenty minutes, I'm just saying. Twenty minutes, every person gets three minutes. Please state your name and your relationship to the district, et cetera, and read it at the beginning of public comment. Which may also help people with, um, understanding the timeframe that they have, both as a whole and individually. Do, when do you have public comments of near agenda? Is it the beginning? Is it?
The beginning.
Okay, fantastic. That's great. Um. So reading that public comment statement at the beginning of public comment can be very helpful and then.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point. We have, the last couple of meetings, we have. Mentioned the time. Commitment around three minutes, but I do think that we could probably elaborate a little bit more around that. So I think that's, that's good advice.
Does anyone else have anything else? Um, for this section that they might want to, that they feel like maybe.
The only thing we didn't really. Is we do, whether we want to do anything with social media. And that was discussed, but.
Yeah, I don't see it. It's a good point, Jim. Maybe we need to, as we're talking about. And maybe it is on here, I'm just not. But if it's not, uh, Jen, maybe that's for when we're talking about next year's objective, that might be something.
The subcommittee we've talked.
Yeah, yeah, oh yeah, definitely. The subcommittee was, was addressing it.
Okay, so I've put that on, I'm taking notes. Uh, I put that on that list and then we'll come back to that and we'll talk about next year's goals. So then let's jump to last year's goal number three, including the documentation communication. Uh, which sort of sounds like it also is help, uh, is partially, uh, related to the previous goal. Did you, what has been achieved as far as developing the outline of the budget process and communication around that?
I think this goal was pretty much met. I mean, we did. We had an outline in terms of the timeline for our budget. We had a clear, um. Subcommittee meetings about, you know, what was happening with the timeline on the budget. And. You know, the, it was a pretty robust. Workshop and then the workshop. Document was then. Think, as I recall, sort of.
Yeah, and then, yeah, like to the school committee, to the subcommittee, workshop, public hearing. Yeah, we did all the steps and it actually worked out really well.
And we were approved well in advance of town meeting, well in advance of FinCom hearing, which was the first time ever that. He approved our budget before FinCom did. Or, or at least didn't force FinCom after wait for us. Um, which is, you know, has, should be, so.
You know, just moving forward, we'll have further conversations, because I think. I've seen thought. Place to involve, I just thought about the workshop and how. The process one. That's my first year, not, not know what to expect from.
I don't know if we did a one-page cheat sheet. Yeah, I did finish. I don't, I don't, it said, it's, uh, it said develop a one-page cheat sheet. Not sure we did. Or that that, the subcommittee did that. But I, I could.
Did you, what did you present? Did you have a budget book that you presented, the narrative budget book and then the secondary adjust the numbers?
It was all one.
So the cheat sheet could just be, uh, by the numbers, here's just, you know, the changes, um. It does, the cheat sheet doesn't, I, I'm not sure what you meant by cheat sheet.
Well, it's identify gaps and additional available data points, so.
But it sounds like everything else went really well, so.
Yeah, I think this was a goal. I mean, this is a goal, it's a school committee goal, but it's also, I mean, I've asked about it myself in our finance officer, so, you know. The way we did it, you know, when we did the second part, I guess. It was more of a boiled down, you know, first was like, here's the whole budget, here's a boiled down, so maybe that's kind of the way the cheat, cheat sheet kind of thing would be.
I don't know if we did necessarily, uh, like a, you know, postmortem on the opportunities to update process, so I suppose that's sort of.
Do you have a finance subcommittee?
Uh, we have a budget.
Budget subcommittee, excellent. So I would say. Move the postmortem to the budget subcommittee, um, because it sounds like the majority of your goal, the majority of the portions of this goal were met this year. So maybe the budget subcommittee should take on what additional improvements should be made, but doesn't necessarily have to be an additional goal for next year. Any other thoughts?
Yeah.
Was, was there a, uh, I'll start by saying, you know, the amount of data. That was shared and, uh, was much better. Uh. You know, so, you know, kudos to those involved in that. Um, did we actually document a timetable though required to? I know that we have an idea of when things happen, but. That is documented? Okay, where's that at?
It was in the budget.
It's part of the workshop. Is it in the book or is it just?
Okay, it's in the slides. I think it may be the beginning part of. Have to look at it.
Yeah, no, the dates and everything, because we, you know, we have FinCom, it's in their calendar.
Does it, do we have it for like going forward, like what it'll be for fiscal year? Yeah, I just, okay.
So let me ask, where does that live? That document.
On our website.
Be on the website.
Is there a top on the website? If the public could just. Aren't it fantastic? Because that would be, to me, that would be my next suggestion is to, now that you've done all that work, make sure that it's as public facing as possible and as accessible as possible. Excellent. Okay, so we're going to hold there for a second and stop sharing. And before we talk about next year's goals. Just a quick review of. Sorry about that. Thought I had it pulled up and I didn't. Just a very quick review of goal setting. So, in one second. One second. Um, okay. Nope, I'm not sharing anymore. Sorry about that. Okay, so. When we talk about goal setting. Um, all of you have taken charge, of course. So you've heard me say. The reason we set goals, why do we set goals? That's an easy. That's an easy question. Anyone who's ever gone grocery shopping hungry knows why you set goals. Um, we want to make sure we keep the committee on track. These are all things you've heard before. We want to align the committee with the superintendent. We want to make sure that the school committee goals are not a way to give the superintendent more work. We want the school committee goals to support the district and the superintendent. Um, it also lets stakeholders know how functional the district is. Are you setting goals for yourself? Or is there continuous improvement happening? Or are we just checking boxes along the way? And then if you don't set goals, someone or something else will. Um, any number of. Events that happen in your district, funding questions, building issues, um. Competency determination policies from the state, any number of things will take over if you don't set goals for yourselves. So. We want to make sure, I don't know why that shifted like that. Technology is wonderful. Uh, we want to make sure our goals are smart goals, specific, strategic, measurable, action-oriented, rigorous, realistic, and results-focused and timed and tracked. When you set your goals, we want to make sure that they are measurable. There are outputs. Actions, processes, and then there's outcomes, which are your results and benchmarks. And we want to think really, um. Carefully about what our data looks like. What does the, not only what does the achievement of the goal look like, but what does. Um, what is the information that we're going to use to get that goal achieved? Uh, to, to understand whether or not that goal was achieved. And sometimes that's quantitative data. Sometimes it's literal. Test scores and budget books and things like that. Sometimes it's qualitative and it's less, um, easy to. Pin down when it's, um, a qualitative data. Uh, you don't necessarily have numbers to tell you. How student wellbeing is going, but you have reports from guidance counselors, you have events happening in your schools. Um, quantitative versus qualitative data, be really clear about what you're looking for as far as what does it look like if this goal is achieved and how are we going to know that? Um, smart goals, which you guys have some really good smart goals from last year. I like how you put them together. It is a way that I would recommend to. Many of my other committees. Uh, this is an example of a set of smart goals. I think this is Danvers and I really should label that. Um, they have a goal and then they have their action steps right underneath it. You guys did that really well with last year's goals, where you had the goal and you had the action step and you even had the checkpoint. So I think the way you're doing this. Is great. Um, and you should continue doing so. So. Now that we've very briefly run back over how we set goals, let's talk about the goals for next year. So. One second, let me go back to where I was. Sorry, but I just want to make sure that I'm broadcasting for the people at home. Uh, so let's talk about. Let's talk about your goals for next year. Um, as far as the goals from last year carry over, I'm going to share again. Goal number one, um, this sounds like it's time to move this goal to the policies subcommittee. Um, so that the school committee can now charge the policy subcommittee with developing protocols. Um, for how you update the online manual and maybe looking into how you get it to a more searchable PDF format. So that sounds like the full committee is mostly done with that. It's time for the subcommittee to take over. Does anyone else have any thoughts on that one? Okay, um, goal number two. So we'll move goal number one to the subcommittee. Um, goal number two. Enhancing, last year's goal number two, enhancing and improving school committee communications, um. Do you feel like you want to carry this over to this year's?
Yes.
Goal, okay. What are some of the things you would like to see under? So right now, I, from the previous conversation, I have you want to have a public comment statement. Um, you want to have a plan for public relations and you want to talk about social media.
I think, I think there's some work to do with the newsletter.
Okay.
We do have a, a template, but I don't, it could probably use a review. And to be, um, used a little bit more.
That's the subcommittee.
Yeah.
That's not a school committee.
Do, are a lot of these moved to the communication subcommittee similar to what we did with the policy subcommittee?
So I would say some of them are, some of them could be, but you're going to want, um. Public comment statement should stay with the full committee, um, a public relations plan. The subcommittee can work on it, but it does need to come back to a full committee. And because it's not like a maintenance goal, I would say I would keep it as a school committee goal. So school committee through the subcommittee would, and then we say, so. Tell me about social media. What is it that you guys were talking about as far as social media for goal?
So I think that, uh, part of it. Was just using that as a medium, a one-way medium. To kind of push information out to the, the community. But there was a little bit of debate, to be quite honest, around, you know, there were some. Myself mostly, who just didn't want to create a second, you know. To me, it might make sense to do that, but it has to be additive to our school committee website. Right? Cause I just, I don't want to maintain the same, you know, information in both places, because that'll become stale very quickly. Uh, and, and I think my view of what, uh, like a, a Facebook or social media is, it's, it's an interactive forum. And just posting information on a Facebook page, for example, to me, isn't really, meets the guidelines of what I'd call social media. That's just really kind of a. Stat, you know, a, a way to present information out. So I think we were struggling a little bit with, you know, do we have a redundant way to kind of push communication? Or if we do, let's just make sure that it's additive and that we're not, you know, kind of having two, now two places to maintain that information. There was also a component of. Some of, some of us thought that, no, let's, if we're going to use social media, let's use it as intended and allow. It to be kind of a two-end, a, a back end, uh, you know, with the, with the community. You know, that's. You know, that's, that has to be managed, uh, and that's kind of where we were just, we were at that point. Um, and so I think one of the goals going forward would be around social media is determining what we mean by that. How it would be helpful, uh, how it would be additive, uh, where it might make sense and where it might not make sense. And then we'd have to provide, I know, I know districts that do this provide very specific guidelines.
Yes.
Around its management and how school committee members should use it. So we were, that's kind of where we were.
Right.
Uh, so we just need to kind of, and I think where Brian and I were is we needed to come back to the school committee. To get a little bit more guidance from them, so that we were kind of then following the will of the committee when we were discussing this as a subcommittee.
Okay, so let me back up and say. I would exercise extreme caution about using social media as a conversation point for the committee and the public.
Mm-hmm.
Um, every day, we are inventing new and exciting ways to violate open meeting law through whatever platform comes up next. You have to be very careful that you're not having discussions in a way that is deliberative on social media. That is then to the exclusion of a meeting in the room at the properly posted meeting according to open meeting law. So I would recommend that your, that social media used by committee members, and we do have a handout that I can send you off. Um, is very one-way informative. The chair speaks to the committee, the way the superintendent speaks to the district. It is informational, it is not a discussion, because the discussion should only be happening in the room at the posted meetings. According to the little, no discussion, deliberation. And I wouldn't want you to run afoul of that. So any choices you do make, I wanna recommend, we always recommend you run them by your district legal counsel. To make sure that your district legal counsel says, yes, that's, that, that is how that should be being used. And I know Liz and Larry are gonna be here later today to talk to you all about open meeting law, et cetera. So that would be a really good conversation to have with her. As far as repeating the information, it's not necessarily a bad thing to just repeat the information in a second place. Because there are plenty of people who have, say, Facebook, who are not subscribed to your email list. There are plenty of people who are subscribed to your email list who don't have Facebook. If you don't have a kid in the district, you're not getting those blast updates from the superintendent, from principals, et cetera. So sharing things on social media can be very effective. I do wanna back up again, though, and remind you guys that, um, as you know, the superintendent is the only person that can speak for the district. And the chair is the spokesperson for the school committee. So we wanna make sure that information that's being shared is coming out of the correct. Office, so to speak, uh, so that it's the appropriate lines of communication.
Yeah.
So having said that, let's talk about what you see as, uh. What the school committee would like to guide the communication subcommittee on as far as how to communicate with the public. Are there any thoughts there? There are no wrong answers. Well, there are. Let's be precise. This is a discussion. This is a workshop. So what are the things that you guys think would be? Helpful as far as communications moving forward?
I think. Um, to the point you just made about people who don't have students in the district. I think it would be worthwhile to explore whether there's a mechanism by which the committee can actually build. An email distribution list for those people, you know, so if your children have all graduated and you're still interested in understanding what's going on in the schools. Is a way, is there a way you can opt in on our website to receive? The school committee newsletter or to receive, you know, the updates that the superintendent sends out. Um, that's something that I think might be worth exploring if there's a way that we can do it.
So I wonder, do, is there a town manager newsletter? From the town, there's no Marblehead Town Manager's Newsletter? Okay, very often what you'll see is there'll be a town manager's newsletter that comes out like every month or every other month, and there'll be a superintendent's call. Uh, I can tell you that that is what my town does. Um, and the superintendent shares an update to the town manager. So that could be on the town website is potentially a way to do that. So you wouldn't necessarily have to, excuse me, create a whole other subscription list that needs to be managed. Um, using the town website for notices, et cetera, could be a way to do that. But I think that's, so let's put that, um. Communications with town. Um, okay, anything else?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a good point. We don't have an, a sort of op, or, or op-doubt. I mean, we do have to wonder whether. We're compliant with. Opt-out laws for these newsletters. I think most newsletters include that as an option, uh, if you're getting forward a newsletter. You know, from someone who actually gets it. Uh, you could, you could opt into that. We could use social media together, or to opt into a subscribe list.
Yeah. This might be too detailed a question, but. Like, we, we always say Facebook when we talk social media, but that's becoming somewhat so yesterday. You know, uh, I'm just curious how districts manage, like all the, the different, uh, you know, who's using, you know, what one is the preferred one? Do you have to maintain it across several social media sites?
Yes, and there are some that talk to each other. So there's some that, um, especially if you're talking about the meta products, um. They do tend to cross-post. Uh, I would say when you're talking about a social media, um, when you're talking about. The district sharing information, you should have in your policy manual, a policy that talks about how information is shared publicly. Um, because it's less about what the information being shared is and more about. There will be someone in the district who is responsible for the website, who have that. Someone who's making sure that students' privacy is being protected when things are being posted, et cetera. So that, that part of it at least would be, um, the leadership team, the administration would need to make sure that what's being shared on the website. And then, um, if the district is maintaining social media sites, so in my town, I can tell you that. Each elementary school, each middle school and the high school, they all have Facebook pages. It's run by the principal. And the district has access to it and that's all in that policy. Um, and it is only informational and it is very careful not to violate any student or staff privacy as they go. So I would say that's one piece of it. The other piece would be, yeah, there's like fifteen. There's a new platform every day. I mean, are you on Blue Sky, are you on Twitter, are you on Instagram? Guys wanna have a TikTok? No, you don't, that's funny. Um, there are multiple ways to do it. I think most districts, I see them sharing on Twitter. I see them sharing more so on Blue Sky now, um, a little bit more on Blue Sky now, um, but mostly it's Facebook and then their own. Um, their own website and then email blasts. So don't think you have to be on every platform. But make sure that it is, is, it is at least consistent and that it's paying attention to student and staff privacy, um, which are in your policies.
And and then really for the committee, one thing I, I don't think I see on here is, um, we also talked about like coffee type meetings with, with the community. So maybe we could put that on there. And again, I think the communication subcommittee, uh, needs to consult with the school committee. On what their will is around that particular type of, uh, form. We did one of them, so you know, that. Uh, we did one that went fairly well, but we haven't set up a, any subsequent meetings yet.
Well, I think we can, uh, there's surveys mentioned on here and Al, you said that.
Yeah.
You didn't know how, where that got left off, but I think we can easily pick that back up.
Yeah.
And part of that survey could be finding out which platforms people are using. Because the platforms that we wanna be on are the ones that our leaders are gonna be on. So I, I, you know, I think we could gather some feedback on that.
Okay.
So. I'm just making notes here. It sounds like the full committee will be working on developing a public comment statement, which should be, uh, based on your public comment policy. Um, the full committee wants to look into, well, the sub, the communication subcommittee on behalf of the full committee will look into surveying the public. Um, and come up, coming up with a plan. For public relations. Oops, sorry. Never edit in public. So the. Subcommittee will talk about, uh, the subcommittee will start looking into surveying the public, um. Uh, as far as a plan for public relations, social media, newsletter, communication with the town. Uh, so, but that, I would give it as a full committee goal, because even though the subcommittee is gonna work on it, the full committee will be part of it. So I would give that as a goal. So beyond that, is there anything else as far as school committee goals that you would like to? Talk about developing for next year? So you have, you're updating the policies, you're gonna move that to the subcommittee, because now it's a maintenance. Um, the budget process, you're moving that to the subcommittee, because that's now in this maintenance phase as well. So is there anything else as far as the school committee itself that you would like to bring to go around?
I would like to see us, and I think it would potentially be a joint goal with the administration. Um, but set a goal around relationship repair or rebuilding, um, with. Our teachers and staff.
Um, you have on, on slide nine, your packet. You mentioned Portrait of a Graduate.
Ah, yes.
Yeah, uh, that's something I, I'd like to develop, even if it's. You know, maybe it's a, a, a set of graduates, you know, to cover sort of a, a diverse. The needs of the district, but I, I would love to know what people expect. A graduate of our schools to, to look like.
Do you, does Marblehead not currently have a portrait of a graduate?
I believe. That is part of the high school's re-accreditation process. They're working on that, but it's not something that has been brought forward to technical.
It might be a joint goal. So generally a portrait of a graduate, if you guys are going through the ASK, um, the. Um, accreditation process, yes, that usually does happen through the ASK. And it is, this, the administration begins it. It's sort of like strategic planning, where it begins with the, um, administration, and then it comes to the committee for review and discussion, et cetera. Um, but I would say maybe your goal would be support the development. Um.
Not sure that's enough for.
Um, and that, well, I would also ask, have you developed the superintendent's goals for the upcoming?
Well, he's in a, he's in it.
He's in, oh.
Through October.
Oh, through October, right, you said, okay. Um, and I would say it, it is. It is a goal, but you would need to think about what your actual action items would be. And I think that might be something that comes. After the accreditation process, I can tell you that aligning to the portrait of a graduate is more of a school committee goal. Than developing the school committee, the portrait of a graduate, um. On my committee, and this predates me, and I brag on them all the time about this, um. Our portrait of a graduate is five words. Resilient, resourceful, respectful, responsible, ready. Because that's what we want our graduates to be. And our superintendent goals actually align to those five things. And when those superintendent goals are reflected on an agenda item, it says the superintendent goal with it. And then what of the four, oh, what of the five I's it relates to. So developing the portrait of a graduate, you can support the development, but then I would say making sure that your goals and your processes align with. So your operating protocols, things like that, that would be more of a school committee goal.
So is it maybe more of a goal for? Next year, let's see, mine developed.
Yeah, e- especially when is the NEASK, um, process slated to finish?
The people who knew.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's okay. We don't have to leave today with a completely developed set of goals. The point of this is to talk about your, um, thoughts for the upcoming year, you know, how you wanna develop it, so. We'll leave it on the list. I'm gonna return all these notes to you as well. After this meeting, I will send back a more complete, it won't look like that. It'll be a little bit more fleshed out. I will send back a more complete list of what we discussed and the possibilities for your goals for next year. Is there anything else you wanna add to this list and talk about?
So, um, this might be getting into the how a little bit too much, but, you know, I, I think Kate talked about. Better interaction representation with other entities. Um, I think some other school districts have like a teacher representation on their school committee.
Not necessarily, um. So you, as a school committee, you can invite as many ex officio people to the room to talk with you as you want. Um, anyone who was not elected can't vote, but you can certainly have, there are districts that have, um, a union representative that sits with them. There are districts that have a CPAC representative. You very often see representatives from Metco at the table as part of the discussion. You just need to make sure that you're not, um, that only the people who are technically elected get to vote, because they.
Right.
Everyone else is what's called ex officio. They don't have executive session privileges and they can't vote. So it is entirely possible to add people to the conversation, yes. Not every district does it that way. Um, not every district would necessarily have a multitude of ex officio people at the table, but there are some that do. So if you wanted to do that, you absolutely.
Yeah, so to me, the goal would be, not to say we, 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 you know, we're going to do it. To me, is I think it's, it would be good for us to evaluate whether some ex officio, uh, membership would be helpful to our goals. To, towards our mission. And that, and I think student representation can be done a little bit, well, I'd like that to be evaluated by the school committee. You know, our student rep comes in, kind of makes a short presentation and then leaves. Um, so I'm just looking, I'm just curious if there's maybe a, a better way to have student representation on this committee.
And it is, every district does it.
Yeah. Yeah, we may keep it as, as is, but I just, I think it's a, a good goal to think about, is there a better way to do it? And how it might help us as a committee.
So maybe it is a goal around. School committee exploring the use of ex officio members.
Mm-hmm.
You know, not specifically limited to students or educators, but just sort of broadly looking at that.
Yes, that's an upgrade.
Who's participating in the discussions.
Yes.
Okay.
Could you send some examples of, of, not right now, but, you know, in time, could you send some examples of districts who maybe have more of that going on?
Absolutely. I can, off the top of my head, I can think of Gotten Unstable has the CPAC sitting at the table, um. Everett, Chelsea, they have Metco representatives that sit at the table. Melrose has a Metco set, we're set representative that sits at the table. So yes, I will send you examples of.
Thank you.
And also, um, represent, uh, I'll send some examples of students sitting at the table. So student government has an organization like us, like. The superintendents have theirs, school committees have theirs, student government has theirs as well, and they may actually be a really, the reason.
That's something the goal I think is here.
Okay.
Not for us.
Okay. I will send that as well. Okay.
So, another one, um, and this is kind of high level, but. One thing I'm a little concerned about, you know, if we improve our communications, we, you know, review our policies and update them, et cetera, et cetera. Does that really result in better student outcomes, however, we might mention that? So, so when I think about goals for us, I, you know, part, part of what I try to answer is who is supposed to answer to this town? Whether we are a good, great school district.
Right.
Right, and if, and if the school committee and obviously the superintendent have some responsibility for that. What specific things were you doing around that?
Right. So when school committees develop policies. You develop policies and you hand them to the leadership team, and the leadership team does the development of the procedures and the handbooks and the day-to-day moves on the ground. This is what's happening in our buildings. But yes, understanding what metrics you're looking for from the community. Um, what does that look like in your district? A portrait of a graduate, that's really how to help that, so the NEASK accreditation you guys are going through. Um, that can give you a lot of data as to what student achievement looks like. Um, it may or may not give you some good data on what student well-being looks like. If you're looking at what the success metrics are for Marblehead as a whole. Understanding what the community feels like success means could be part of that as well. So I would say that's a good goal to have, but I would wait until after the NEASK accreditation. And then talk about what does it look like to say we have successful students? What does that mean for Marblehead Public Schools? Because. It can mean any number of things. It can mean test scores, it can mean positive placement, it can mean, um. Lower emergency mental health referral numbers, it can mean, um, greater. I'll stop it. It's gonna mean different things to different towns. So I would say after the NEASK accreditation and the information you get back from that, really going through what information you got from there. Because there will be a lot of statistics if not of that, um, so.
Well, I guess we want, might include some of that in, uh, any surveys we send out, because we, we wanna know. How we're doing as a committee, but if we have an opportunity for communication and for feedback and gathering data. How we're doing as a committee, but if we have an opportunity for communication and for feedback and gather data. That might be a good. Piece to add into that as well, especially if we could be concise. I don't wanna send out like thirty questions.
Do you guys have a current strategic plan?
I mean, yes, but it's being developed.
That will also be a really good data point for you all, because the strategic plan should. Point the district in a direction. And uh, we do recommend that they're three years now, it used to be five years, we try and recommend that they're three years now. And that they have the same goal structure as you would and the superintendent would, smart goals, achievable things, what do the metrics look like, what does it look like? But around success. So I think between the NEASK um accreditation and the strategic plan. That is a good place to start talking about what is success like for Marblehead Public.
But I don't think they're gonna be done. I know the strategic plan. My understanding is will be approved for twenty six, twenty seven. So. Yeah, I I don't, I don't know when the deliverable is, and same with NEASK, I mean, it won't be.
Right, that would be a future goal. It would not be next, it would not be the goal for this year. Um, it would be a future goal, but it's a good thing to have in mind when you're putting your goals together, that continuous improvement is always on the table and. When you're developing this year's goals, you're always looking back at last year's and thinking about what it looks like in the future. So having it as part of the conversations.
One thing, I think, I don't know how this would come as a, one of the things I think I have struggled. With is not having enough data. Um, on a whole bunch of different things. Staff accountability has been, I don't know, five years I've been asking for staff accountability report. A needs-based budget, a true needs-based budget, all is dependent on. Data. So I don't know how we, you know, I don't know how to phrase like. Or um, that we. We've never really had sort of a comprehensive. Way to ask for and receive. Data in order to make decisions that.
So what do you mean by staff accountability?
Um, staff accountability to me is that every. Staff member is accounted for in terms of, you know, classroom size, caseload, you know, um, number of hours of services. We don't have that.
Okay.
So that's why I try to understand from, that's why we don't have a needs-based budget, because in order to build a needs-based budget, you need to say, okay, here are the needs in my school building. I need X number of teachers and X number of, you know, OTAs, PTA, whatever. And how how can you do that if you don't have? The data on what your needs are. From your student bo, of your student body.
So I would say the needs-based budget conversation should definitely be the budget. Um, and talk about how the budget gets built there. Um, as far as, excuse me, staff accountability. On the one hand, yes. You need to understand staffing in the buildings to talk about a needs-based budget. On the other hand, we need to be very careful about. The separation of the school committee supervises the superintendent and the superintendent supervises everyone else.
Well, it's the super, it, the. Goal was superintendent to do that report, to then build, help build the new, build the needs base, or to come and say, this is what we need.
So is it part of the current goals?
Um, it was.
Okay.
We didn't exactly get the level of detail. I didn't see level of detail out of something.
Okay, well, that, and your process should come to a conclusion in October, right?
No, the process would, um, it is part of the budget process. So it didn't happen for this year's budget, so, you know. The goal would be for it to work for this, this coming fiscal year.
I'm sorry, I thought it was part of the superintendent's goals this year to do.
It was, and we got a partial report.
Okay.
Um, but the purpose of the report in a more robust fashion would be to drive the budget process. That's really what it's based on.
So I would say, are you doing your summative in October?
Yes.
Well, if that's the cycle you're on, then yeah, that would be part of that conversation then. If it, if that was one of the goals, it would be part of that summative. Um, discussion at that point. And then it could become a future goal to continue it, and then I would say also the.
But that's only one example of dat, of data, that's all. We don't necessarily, you you know, we get a lot of narratives and we get a lot of narratives. Um, we don't get, I don't see a lot of data.
Okay, so what other kinds of data are you guys looking for?
Standardized tasks and MCAS.
How we're doing relative budget-wise.
Or, yeah, but that's another, yeah, that is true too. Budget reporting is.
It's almost like a dash, you know, this sounds a little bit like, to me, like a dashboard.
But with more detail, I.
Well, yeah, with the metrics that we wanna monitor.
Good detail.
Yeah.
Usually dashboard sort of, you know, top line. But is it maybe? The school committee's role or goal? To figure out what the metrics we want on that dashboard to be? I'm not looking for a dashboard, I'm looking for the data. And so I don't know how to make this a goal, I'm just saying that I have struggled to get the data I need.
So this wouldn't be your goal, this would be a goal you would propose to the superintendent. So bringing back to the committee more information. That would be around, um, say a professional practice goal or um.
That we already have the goal set, I guess we can.
Well, if you're coming to the summative in October, then you're getting ready to reset the goals for the next round. So I would say it would be part of that conversation.
Yeah, just.
I just don't want time just like in other ways. Yeah.
Yeah, just when I'm saying dashboard, it it also includes all that detail that rolls up, so I'm not saying, you know, just a. That, you know, the highlight has to be all the data, but then, you know, depending on who's viewing it for what reasons, you'd see a different slice of that data perhaps, so.
So I would also say that as far as budget reporting, you have, you should have policies in your manual to talk about when you get certain reports. Um, surround certain fiscal reports and that should be.
I don't.
Okay, so. I would say check your manual, um, and your financial policies, your fiscal policies in section D, um, because there should be policies in there. About fiscal reporting and audits and things like that, um, and that can help bolster the request for the data. So, and if you don't have them, check our online policy manual for our model policies.
Yeah, one of the things we hear, which I do think is is legitimate, we had a system that was not conducive to. Um, easily reporting during the year, and that has. We did change our system effective last month, so. I think it would be easy, you know, I think it would be easier for our finance folks to do, to be able to be, so that's good.
Some districts have like, the school district has like, what I would call an operational analyst that has the responsibility for doing this.
So not necessarily an operational analyst, um. Within each department, there's usually someone who's responsible for, like, in the business office, it is your business manager who would make sure that all the reports are being filed on time. That they're going out to, um, they are accessible for the school committee, because you have to have certain reports based on statute, um. Depending on which. Um, department it was, there would be someone in there that that would be part of their job.
Their responsibility.
So very often when we're talking about like MCAS, very, um, I can tell you most districts' MCAS scores are. Um, mo, most MCAS scores. Um, are funneled through the curriculum, whoever's in charge of curriculum, usually that's the assistant superintendent. Um, so depending on which department it was.
Are we, I just wanna say, when we close this part, can we take a break real quick? Or if not, I need to take one.
I would love to take a break, yeah.
Now, now is okay, or you want?
No, it's great now, then we'll come back and talk about operating protocols.
Great, thank you.
Absolutely.
So I had next up on my list of things that we discussed, talking about your operating protocols. It does look like your operating protocols were just updated. Sorry, that was the wrong thing. Um, I'm gonna share screen in just a second. I have that your operating protocols were just updated in June. But operating protocols is only a list of things that were potentially going to be discussed today. So, but I would open it to the committee and say, are there things about your operating protocols that you would like to discuss? Or is there anything else from sort of the governance world that you would like to go over?
I'd be curious for the operating protocols. I think it says, I believe it says in here that the committee will hold members sort of accountable for abiding by them, and I'm wondering, sort of, I take that, sorry about the chat. Best practices for how to do that, yeah.
Right, so in some districts, it just means that the operating protocols are reviewed in the way that the goals are reviewed. And that if someone is getting off track, members, usually the chair, because the chair of the, is the servant of the body. So usually if someone is very off track as far as the operating protocols go, it would be a conversation with the chair. Chair would talk to the member about this is what our operate, this is what you agreed to. This is what our operating protocols are, this is why we do this, best practices for the district are this. There are other districts when you have someone who is very much far field of the operating protocols. There are some districts that will go as far as censure. But if you don't have a policy about that, I would not recommend that unless you have a policy. So for the most part, when someone's, you know, kind of out of line as far as the operating protocols go, it's conversation with the chair to start with. Because that is sort of in the rules and responsibilities of the chair. Keeping members on track, keeping the meeting functioning, making sure the business of the district is getting done is a function of the chair.
Thank you. So do you suggest that school committee members, if they do have a concern about that, that they go to the chair?
Absolutely. Your chair is the, as the servant of the body, the chair is the person responsible for making sure that the committee is functioning, that the business is getting done. So if you had, it's like with any other concern, if you had a concern about budget not getting to you on time, documents, something not getting posted, you would bring concerns like that to your chair, and then the chair would have a conversation with you or the member or whatever else. So yes, always bring your concerns to your chair first. So I would say also, I know you guys accepted these operating protocols in June. But I would like, I would like to suggest that you add as part of your operating protocol process that when you guys all vote on it, have everyone vote on it together in a meeting to adopt your operating protocols. And then have everyone, including the superintendent, sign it. Because it holds everyone accountable for the, you know, level playing field of this is how we're going to work with one another. If you have not only adopted it by a vote, but also everyone acknowledges it. Gives a little bit more, a little bit more teeth to when the chair would have to have a conversation about something, you know, that was not working, so.
So, sorry, are you then suggesting that these be voted by the committee on an annual basis?
Okay, absolutely. And you can do it right after your election, which appears to be what happened here is like, this looks like it was adopted shortly after your election. But I don't actually remember when your election was. Did you mention it May?
Election was in June and after the date on this document.
Oh, after that, okay. Here, can I would suggest, your first full meeting in the fall, vote on your operating protocols as a group, and then everyone sign them. It's a good way to kick off the year, reminding everyone, you know, these are the rules of the road, these are our rules of engagement. It's a good way to reinforce that respect for the process, respect for the rules. And it's a good reminder to not just you, but to the community what your actual rules are. We at MASC, we get a couple bites at the apple trading, you guys, you have to unshut the course at some point. But most of the public will never really know what your rules and responsibilities are. So your operating protocols are one of those documents that when you adopt them, it's a good way to tell the public, this is how we function, these are the standards we hold ourselves to, these are the things that we are accountable for. So I would recommend, yes, once a year. Most committees will have something over the summer where they go over their operating protocols and goals like this. And then their first full meeting at the beginning of the year, adopt your goals for the year, adopt your operating. It's a good best practice. And having your legal counsel come in and do a training over the summer is also a good best practice. So, any other thoughts on your operating protocols or anything else governance wise you would love to go over?
I have a question around policies.
You have a field director here, add that.
So, we have a pretty big construction project with putting a new roof on our high school. And we're, I'm curious, I'll just speak for myself, but I think there may be others on the committee that I'm just curious about when we would use a subcommittee to help with that project or an advisory committee to help with that project. And part of the question would also be like, subcommittees, are they predominantly school committee members only? That would help with the understanding the difference between the two.
So here's what I would say about that. If it belongs to the school committee, it's a subcommittee of the school committee. And is therefore, you can add members of the public, but it's a little bit more, it's bound by OML, et cetera. If you're going to have a school building committee, that should really be an advisory. And I would say that the superintendent should create that so that the superintendent can populate it with the relevant members of the leadership team and the public. And then also one or two school committee members always under quorum. But a school building advisory committee is more appropriately populated initially by the superintendent. Because remember, your goal in that is through the budget and through policies and through approving things. But the superintendent is really going to be more about bringing the stakeholders together to talk about all of the facets of the building project, including if you're going to go for MSBA funding, et cetera. That would mostly fall under the leadership.
But remember, a building committee under MSBA is a subcommittee.
Yes.
Yeah.
But originating it with the superintendent.
As an advisory.
As an advisory committee.
If you had, is it typical to have a school committee on an advisory?
Depends on what it is, but yes, all the time.
And if you have two, that doesn't make it a de facto somebody, so you don't have.
No, it does not. No, it does not. If the, if the superintendent originates it, it's a superintendent's advisory committee. But I would also say, I would caution you, check your policy manual, section B, talks about advisory committees to.
Yeah.
Center. Just putting school committee members on it doesn't automatically make it a subcommittee. Make sure you stay under quorum for your subcommittees.
Yeah.
So if your quorum for subcommittees is two, don't send two people, send one.
To the advisory. That's what, that's what I was thinking, I thought it might de facto become something.
Always stay under the quorum for the subcommittee of the school committee. And then report back. Because the way you would want to do it is more like a liaison, like you would send a liaison to a town committee. Have that person report back to the board.
I mean, we don't know if John necessarily agrees with this, I don't know if he does or not, but you know, it's just one more. Yeah. I do believe the school committee voted last year to make the facility subcommittee the roof project subcommittee. But that can be, I guess with someone from the affirmative, I don't know, whatever, could change that.
I think our policy talked about, and it has to be revoted on, or the membership and chair have to be revoted on every year.
And committee assignments are usually done annually as well. So again, I would say check your policy manual, section B, about how subcommittees are formed and not in time.
Right, but the fact that it was going to be, that's, I just didn't know if we need to undo that or not, but.
Well, it depends on what your policy says. So if your policy says that subcommittees are reformed and recharged annually, then you wouldn't have to, but if you're going to change the charge, I would say yes, school, school committee needs to vote.
Not sure that there's word, those particular words are in our policy, but yeah, no, I think the policy speaks to members of the committee for the year and not responsibilities so much, yeah.
Yeah, it depends, it does vary from district to district.
So then would you need someone in the affirming to vote to reverse that?
No, because you're not reversing it, you're changing it.
Okay.
You're not undoing it, you're editing.
Well, you're changing it from committee possibly to an advisory. Yeah, I guess that's.
You wouldn't need that someone, it's not. Right, it's not the two thirds reconsideration vote, it's just changing the charge.
All right.
Yeah, the advisory committee, there's a tenure of one year, unless otherwise.
Unless otherwise noted.
Specified, yeah.
Yeah, I was just going into your policy. Ah, yeah, I see what you mean about it's thorting strangely because the file names are not quite in the form. Okay, that makes sense. Anything else this morning? Burning questions?
So, just to go back to the teamwork, if that's something we wanted to do, that is something that MASC offers.
Absolutely.
And what is the, like, what's the amount of powers that you typically would need to do that?
It depends entirely on you guys, but I would say workshops more than two hours, people start, your brain gets fuzzy. It's not effective anymore. So if we wanted to do a team building workshop, I would say two hours max.
Two hours, okay.
Two hours max.
Okay. That's something we'll still consider, but it would also, we, I'd want to wait till after our.
I was gonna say. Yeah. When you have a new member on board, by all means, bring me out, we'll get a team, a teamwork workshop, team building workshop put together. And as soon as you have them on board, send them our way. We have two chartering courses coming up in the fall, and then we're actually looking at adding a chartering course in December. Because we have a little bit of space in the schedule, so. If you guys don't have anything else, it's up to you. You know where to find me, pop my email address, that's in my cell phone number. But yeah.
Right.
And I will send you all of my notes from our goals discussion this morning. And then, yeah, when you're ready, when you get your new member on board, let me know.
Sounds good. Yeah, thank you for your time this morning.
Thank you, thank you, absolutely. You're next.
And again, there's fruit, muffins and coffee. And frank left any.
I just say, yes.
Yes.
This is just a training, so if you want to do it the other way, you could also, because it's not subject to open meeting. When you quit, also finish the rest of your business, it's quick enough.
We had no other agenda items.
Yeah, we were. So train on something, we're not going to do any deliberations about.
Yeah.
Business.
We, I, we weren't sure about the first component.
Well, the first component is absolutely, yeah. But if you want to adjourn your meeting, you can, this is a training, trainings are generic and they are not. There will be no deliberation, so you cannot adjourn a meeting if you want to, then you don't have to do this. It's going to give you the exercises.
Thank you, Alicia.
We need large print. We want down one member. Uh, and John's not coming.
Yeah, he will be returning, he had a ten o'clock commitment.
So, you let me know what you want to do.
Sounds all right. Yeah.
All right, so let me get on. You won't need a five minute break, I have to figure out how to, next, feel free to.
So I need to, she connected, I need to promote her. I'll unmute here.
Venus.
Okay. Alright, so. There's a whole.
Need to mute your.
They're good now. Let me try this better.
Yes.
Yes. I'm using my laptop, I think this, I can get it to places. Okay. Uh, so again, as I mentioned earlier, this is training, not subject to the open meeting while we're not going to do any deliberations, although I see you did post it anyway, so it's okay. If you need copies of the slides afterwards, we can do that, but, um, all I gave you was copies of the actual exercises so that you didn't have to read them off the screen. Some of us, a little bit, it's here. This claimer, which I'm going to tell you, this is not legal advice, it's provided for training purposes, because I don't give legal advice in the whole session. We're going to talk about conflict of interest with three professor, which is one of the ones, how much do you all get paid? I spent six years on my school committee, I didn't get paid anything, in fact, I used to pay my babysitter, so it costs me money for all of the meetings and some committee meetings. Um, and if you violate the conflict of interest law, you will be paying fines and that is really bad. Uh, open me along, we're going to talk about an executive session, some three. Covering on the public records, uh, school committee roles and responsibilities and communications by the committee. So we have a lot to get through, but we're starting early, so this is the. So we're going to start with conflict of interest, it is in chapter two sixty-eight A of the Mass General Law. You all should have a copy of the Mass General Laws from MASC, they give you the selected general laws very useful. Uh, it's under two sixty-eight A, if you feel like reading. It covers and governs public employees and public officials, so everybody who's employed by the school district and everybody who's on the school committee is covered by it. And it ensures that your financial situation and your interests and relationships don't conflict with your official responsibilities. Um, school committee members cannot use public resources such as secretarial services, copy equipment, paper posted for your personal or the purposes. And you can't use your position to get any unwarranted privileges, any privileges that another member of the public couldn't have. It's remembered, you're just another member of the public when you're not actually a citizen. School committee members can take, cannot take any type of official action that will affect the member's financial interests or the financial interests of your business partner. Your prospective employer for negotiating, to work for someone. Your business associate, head business organization for which you are an officer, a director, a trustee or an employee. And any member of your immediate family, they have not redefined immediate family in a long time, or any member of your spouse's immediate family. But the definition of immediate family. Is yours spouse, your children, your parents and your siblings. It's also your spouse's children, parents and siblings. All of those people are part of this. So if you have a family member who works for the district, you can't take any action on any matter that would affect them. So if you have a family member who's a custodian here, and that family member is, let's say, your brother. You cannot vote on the collective bargaining agreement, you have to recuse yourself from any deliberations about that because it would affect your, your brother's, um, financial situation.
So, Liz, just, um, that's just the custodial component of collective bargaining or, okay, just so that, that particular component, okay?
But if your committee were to be talking generally about collective bargaining, for example, for all of the units. Let's say we wanted to make a change across the board, which you did years ago at health insurance. Uh, and the change you were proposing for all of them, if someone's brother was a custodian, they would have had to recuse themselves from that entire discussion. And they can also not vote on it.
Okay.
School committee members are prohibited from hiring, promoting, supervising or otherwise participating in the employment of any person in your immediate family or the immediate family of your spouse. Again, that's not your spouse's, you know, third cousin, once removed, you did the DNA, I guess we're all related somewhere along the line, but the, the ones that they listed. I would also note that, you know, we have new kinds of families now that don't always have spouses, right? People have been partners and commingled their finances, you might not be a spouse, but if, if your life resembles a spouse. You want to do a disclosure about that because you, you can still be held accountable for that. The law prohibits school committee members from requesting or accepting anything without regard to its value in exchange for doing something that's part of your performance or not doing something. Voting one way or not voting one way. It also, um, and they haven't changed this in years, since I was on the school committee gap in the nineties, it has not changed it. Re- requesting or accepting anything of substantial value, which is, uh, fifty dollars per grade for the performance of any official act. Um, or not performance of that act, right? He just can't take fifty dollars again. Gift of substantial value do not include anything worth less than fifty dollars, but if someone gives you something less than fifty dollars every week, you would aggregate what you add them up. Ceremonial gifts, so after my six years on the school committee and many years as chair, they gave me a plaque. I think it cost more than fifty dollars, but it, it's a ceremonial gift that has absolutely no value to anybody else. And I'm sure when I'm dead, my kids will just throw it in the bin, right? That's just what's going to happen to it, so. I tell you this because that doesn't count, and gift for family or friendship, if, you know, you've always exchanged gifts with someone before you were on the school committee, doesn't start, start. Doing that when they are on the school committee, when you are on the school committee, but if that friendship is for you to do something or not do something, then you can't accept it. Confidentiality, um, is certainly one of those things that you have to remember. Uh, school committee members cannot disclose or use any confidential non-public information. So examples of that, executive session minutes before the committee votes to release them, or the content of an executive session. Uh, student record information, you would have it, but if you did, would do it, collective bargaining strategy deliberations. Personnel records, medical records, proposal and bid documents, mentioned a roof earlier, that kind of thing. Bid documents on the roof. You cannot, once, until it's public, you cannot disclose it to anyone, not to your spouse, not to your kids, not to your dog. Alright, actual conflict versus the appearance of a conflict, you have the actual conflict, you have to disclose that conflict. And what does that mean? That means you have to file a written disclosure, um, and that gets filed with the town clerk. That's not, it's not, you haven't disclosed until you've actually filed it with the town clerk. Uh, I also think you should disclose it as a school committee, because then everybody knows, because nobody goes to the town clerk to say, oh, chief Liz, um, how many disclosures have you filed, right? Makes sense to also do it here so the whole world knows about it. Um, who may not participate in any official business where the conflict exists, and you should leave the meeting during the deliberations and voting on the matter. And I've had school committee members asking me, well, can I just sit there and say nothing? Well, no, your face says things. And your presence says something, right? No, you should leave the meeting. Um, come back for the rest of the meeting, but for that portion of the meeting. If you have an appearance of a conflict, you can file a disclosure, uh, disclose again with the town clerk, and if you disclose, you can participate in the matter. Because it's not an actual conflict, but it might have an appearance of conflict.
Is that required?
There are disclosure forms that if there's an appearance, you should, are you going to get fined for not doing it? Probably not. If you don't file and actually use yourself on the actual conflict, you could get fined, and some of the fines are, you know, ten thousand dollars, so. You know, nobody signed up to do that, you all signed up to, you know, do what's right, what's best for kids, but not to spend ten thousand dollars in fines. So we have to be careful about this one, that's why I put it first, because it's the one that costs you money. There's something called the rule of necessity. And this is important because the committee wants to deliberate and vote on a matter, but four out of the five members are disqualified because of conflicts. Let me give you an example of that. Um, let's say you wanted to raise athletic fees and every one of the students participating in athletics, that may impact. And impact your personal finances, you're disqualified, but then you could never raise athletic fees if we always had too many people who on the committee who could vote on it. So then you have to disclose it, and the rule of necessity, and you should never do this, I know, you should check the ethics committee part with us, make sure that it's truly a necessity, then you can vote on it. Uh, you cannot use it, uh, it only uses as a last resort, you cannot use it if, for example, it's a tie vote. And you want to break a tie. You cannot use it, uh, because somebody's not available, traveling or sick or whatever, that doesn't count. Uh, so it has to be truly a necessity where you couldn't take any action. Which is interesting because usually you're voting to increase the fees, so it's not like a positive impact on your finances, but still, if, if you have a conflict, you have a conflict. So this is something I always remind people, you need to ask before you act. Because if you call, the state ethics commission has eight person, they are, um. They say nine to five, but I would say more like nine to four, if you want to answer. Uh, you call and you say, I'm on the school committee, I need some guidance on this, this, can I do this, what do I have to do, what? And they do this for free, they will answer you. Uh, but if you call and say, last week I did this, was that okay? If it was not okay, you could just made it a mission, that may cost you ten thousand dollars. So I remind you, always ask before you act. If in doubt, ask, even if there's like, hmm, maybe I should, shouldn't, ask.
Excuse me.
Yes.
The previous slide? Can, can we go back to this one, please? Um.
One before this one?
No, no, this one, thank you. Um, what about something like curriculum? Where, you know, members have, you know, we're, we're voting on a K through six curriculum. And perhaps even, you know, funding for textbooks, for example, and someone has a K through six student.
That, that's different because it's no financial situation unless you're part of the company that's producing.
Okay, so that's individually, thanks.
Usually a financial situation, curriculum is yours, you couldn't possibly.
Okay. Thank you.
And that would not require rule of necessity, uh, but you would have to recuse yourself if you had anything to do with developing the curriculum, working for the company that has the curriculum. Uh, or the textbooks or any, any financial situation, you or any member of your family or your spouse's name, family. Alright, so you would always seek guidance before acting. There, the, the, uh, disclosure forms are online at the state ethics commission's website, there are lots of them. It is a whole lot easier, uh, for you to call them and ask which one, because otherwise you're going to spend an hour going through and trying to figure out which one. You can also call us, but I'm just letting you know, it is free, and we do represent the committee as a whole, not individuals, so it is important to remember that as well.
Liz, what if, what if it's a requirement of other committee members, they think there's a conflict with another committee member? Is there, is no?
Well, it looks like raised it with the other committee member, um, you could certainly, uh. So the state ethics commission investigates allegations of violations. And they do, both make those allegations anonymous as well. So, uh, and sometimes they do a, just a private. I would call it educational letter, it's basically a private slap on the wrist that says, don't do that. Sometimes they do a public one where everybody knows. Sometimes that's not enough and they fine. And then, of course, if you remember, there have been state legislators who would go into prison. Uh, so, you know, it goes all the way from, you know, a confidential letter saying, you shouldn't have done that, don't do this, and take this data extreme again. All the way up to you're incarcerated, right? There are lots of, depending on how big the problem is and how big the violation is. So we have some exercises, wait, let's see, I'm gonna put you in teams, so. L and K are going to do exercise one, three, five and seven, and, um. Two, four, fifth and eight are going to be friendly, and Jen, we're going to take a few minutes, you're going to review them, and then we're going to go through them. So every other one. And that's when you have the large case, you're sitting. And you can talk to each other about it. And you can talk to each other about it.
This one, Ken, or his first cousin on the list of.
No. Who's the house?
I thought we were.
No, I mean, your brother, your wife's brother is.
Your wife. My wife's brother.
Spouse's children, spouse's.
That would be because he told his. Surprise it wasn't. So this is just, let's just.
I would agree, like you're right, yes.
But it makes it easier. Well, I guess the question is, oh, ask, yeah, since required later, so. This would be session. Cause there's potential. For criminal charges, they don't solve everything, it's been filed, yeah.
So, ask what should this school committee do in regards to parent? They call?
I will refer them to.
And I do not need to know, oh, who should not be executive sessions. Um, they work for all charges, like, um. Superdign, right? Choose to tell school members, but it'll still be negotiated. Right, but I think, I mean, there are legal, legal. Um, issues with the executive. And I mean, they wish you by.
As a teacher. Yeah, that's a good point.
It's been apple theme, the question.
Yes. Of empire, I go to New York. Just no longer. Something excelsure. I didn't have, I'm not exactly sure. What that means.
Yeah.
We were discussing your state license plates.
I don't know, you are allowed to have.
Cause Kate was was appreciating the the theme, the apple.
Apple theme, I appreciate it.
But there, there would be a.
Yeah, that's, that's good. It's a good one.
Anyway, the segue was, and they told Kate, empire makes me go to New York State.
It does. They all chess on this side.
Uh, yes, we're doing a three.
Okay.
I think, yeah.
So number one, the best school committee has been in negotiations with bargaining unit. Uh, best association of teachers, also known as BAT, for seven months on a collective bargaining agreement. Enter Cortland, the company committee's bargaining team. BAT has reviewed contracts with town employees and is asking for longevity to match the town clerk, simply to match the police. And personal days to match the town custodians agreement. Cortland wants copies of the town contract. And Cortland asked the town for copies of the contract. Contracts.
Yes, yeah, yes.
Public records, yeah. Cortland tells town employees why she is requesting the contracts or what BAT has said during negotiations. Very good. If that would be breach of the executive session, right? Two, Empire is a member of the best school committee, which has been considering the purchase of a piece of property that involves the middle school. The property belongs to the first cousin of Empire's. The committee has been meeting in executive session to discuss an offer for the property. The members have been unable to agree on an initial offer, but they have agreed not to pay more than four hundred and ninety-nine thousand of land. Empire goes home after meeting and lets his spouse know that the committee wants to buy her cousin's land. And he's going to be all set because they will pay half a million dollars to get it, Celine, and softball field. The next day, Empire goes to the town assessors and asks for the assessment for the property and says the committee is considering purchasing it. And he just wants to know what the value is. So what are the issues with Empire's conduct?
An executive session violation.
Right. Violated a whole bunch of stuff on an executive session. Uh, any, any conflict of interest with the cousin?
No.
Is there an appearance of a conflict of interest?
Sure, yeah.
So they might, Empire might want to file a disclosure about the appearance of a conflict of interest. Cannot tell spouse, cannot tell anyone. And in fact, by even telling the people in the town or assessors office why he wanted that information, he may have just raised the price of it because there may be others interested in that land, right? Ms. John Gold is a school committee member on the best school committee. Her husband, Mr. John Gold, owns a construction business in town. Mr. John Gold's construction business has submitted a bid to renovate one of the town's elementary school buildings. The committee is considering the bids for the renovation in tonight's meeting. What should Mrs. John Gold do?
She should disclose the conflict, then she should recuse herself from.
And when she discloses it, she's gonna file it with town clerk and tell. And use herself, what does that mean? What is she gonna do?
Leave the meeting.
Leave the meeting, not vote on it, not talk to anybody else about it on the committee, not share her.
You have to disclose if you're gonna recuse.
You still disclose.
You do.
Yeah.
That was the question I had, so you just can't recuse yourself.
Well, you should, let's say you forgot to disclose.
I mean, I know.
File it, you still recuse yourself, but definitely should disclose. And that's why, then you recuse yourself. And the disclosure needs to be filed with the town clerk. Also think it's important to sort of mention it as a school committee because nobody's going to.
I know that there have been times in the past when people have recused and not disclosed.
They should file a disclosure, if it touches.
Yeah.
The high school carnival, every spring, students at Best High School organize a carnival to raise money for senior week activities. The carnival takes place in a local park and includes rides, games, music, and cookout. Empire, a member of the best school committee, lives in a house directly behind the park. He has never been a fan of the noise, smell, or traffic created by the carnival each year. Empire asked the best high school principal to require students to find a new venue to host their carnival this year.
I think so, yeah.
And he uses his position as a school committee member to do so? Cannot be, cannot, he cannot suggest it. I mean, I suppose all the neighbors could complain about it, but, um, he cannot use his position as a school committee member to try and influence that.
But he can ask, but you can say, you're out, you're a citizen.
Ask with the, I'm on the school committee.
Or require.
Or require, yes. Cannot require them. All right. Cortland is the chair of the best school. The committee is studying next week on a proposal to change the high school start time from seven thirty AM to nine AM. Based on a prior meeting and statements from committee members, two members appear to be in favor of change and two members appear to be against the change. Cortland's on the side. Cortland receives a card in the mail from a neighbor, a parent of three children in the district, who has been aggressively advocating for the new start time. Inside the card are two theater tickets valued at forty-five dollars each, and it says, keep up the good work. Can Cortland accept the tickets? Yeah. Now, they're under fifty dollars, but there's two of them, so you have to aggregate them. And I will remind you, everybody remember when the Red Sox went to the World Series? I remember way back when, seems like ancient history now, when they broke the, and the tickets might have said. Forty dollars up in the stands for, uh, but then they were selling for four thousand dollars on the street. The value of the ticket is the actual sort of market value at the time. So if it says forty dollars, but it's something sold for four thousand, it's going to be four thousand, you cannot accept it.
So Liz, even if it was under, let's say it was one ticket, it was under fifty dollars, would it still be inappropriate because of the appearance?
But also because he's asking you to do something, right? He's asking Cortland to vote in favor of this.
I mean.
At any value.
Yeah, he didn't ask specifically.
He didn't ask specifically, he said, keep up the good work, which could be very.
It could be, but Cortland should not accept the tickets. Alice Ail's, a middle school teacher, frequently bought and took pieces of water bottles for students in her class. Ail also has her own water bottle with her every day. Sam, student, grabbed Alice's water bottle instead of his own when he started choking on a cookie. Sam took a large bulk of water and discovered that Ail's bottle contained alcohol instead of water. Sam felt ill and then went to the nurse where he reported what happened. After the investigation, Ail was discharged. The reason for her discharge was not known to the public. The superintendent informed each school committee member that Ail had been discharged for consuming alcohol at work and that there was. The potential and criminal charges may be brought against Ail for distribution of alcohol to a minor. After Ail's discharge, Norma Knowsey, a parent of a student in Ail's class, called Ms. Cortland on the school committee to ask. What was the real reason for Ail's discharge? What should Cortland do?
Refer them to the superintendent.
Yeah, I can't answer that question, but you cannot answer those questions.
And there would be no further action by the school committee on this.
There's no action by the school committee.
Unless or until there were some potential.
Even if, it might be, the reason the superintendent would inform you on this is because there could be criminal charges against BAT, but there could have been some. Obviously, there could be.
Liability.
Charge against the school committee for having left a child consuming alcohol.
Now, if it's mentioned at an, an executive session.
No, it wouldn't be mentioned at an executive session, except unless there was litigation. Parent had already threatened litigation, it could be there. If it was just to talk about Alice Ail, she'd have a right under purpose one to be present to record it and speak out.
Well, not if she was terminated.
Anybody who you're gonna talk about in executive session has the right to be present.
Oh.
Yeah. So we're gonna do that under the open meeting law section. Let's go. All right, Carol's condo, Carol's a teacher in the best public schools and is the sister of Empire's wife. Empire's on the best school committee. Best schools committees have a number of executive sessions related to ongoing negotiations with bargaining unit BAT, Association of Teachers. Carol is considering the purchase of the condo, but with the current interest rates, she is concerned that her salary increase will not be enough. The perfect condo is on the market, she calls Empire, asks Empire, what the likely percentage wage increase she will get when the contract is settled? How should Empire respond and why?
Well, she can't answer the question because it's executive session information. And also she has a conflict of interest because it's the sister of.
It should be the judging information because she should be. Because that is one of the immediate family members. And the last one of this one is breakfast with Unis. Ms. John Gold is on the best school committee, her neighbor, Unis, Unis Union is on the best association of teachers bargaining team. For more than ten years, John and Golden Unis have breakfast together the first Saturday of each month. Negotiations between this committee and BAT have been going on for months and Unis' side appears to be moving. During an executive session with the best school committee, the committee considered offering an additional half percent in the third year of the contract, but wasn't. Ready to make that offer until very business costed out the additional half a percent. John and Gold and Unis had their breakfast scheduled for two days after the committee's meeting and before the next bargaining session. John and Gold tells Jim and Unis that the school committee has another half a percent in the last year of the contract and asks Unis. Do you think that will then get the negotiations done? Unis doesn't respond and changed the subject. Are there any issues with John and Gold continuing to meet with Unis for breakfast? Now, she can do, and she's always on that. Any issues? Excuse me. Issues, um, with what John Gold said about the half a percent.
Well, the only issue is typically you would say no, would not be appropriate.
Right, she's, she's not authorized to do it by the school committee. If the school committee authorized her, said, hey.
Just do it off the record conversation, you can.
Conversation because, only because Jim's is also in the bargaining team, if she was not, that would do that.
But would, well.
And only authorized by the school committee, if it's not authorized, she can't go out and disclose it. And first of all, it could never have been authorized because they hadn't even costed it out then.
Right, but even then, would there be a conflict with it being a? Oh, no, they're not the only members they're discussing.
No, there's no conflict.
So there could be.
It's just a neighbor and a friend that they've been having before they were on the, for years, they've been having breakfast together. All right, and before we leave, uh, the conflict of interest, any questions of conflict of interest? Everybody's gonna act fast before you act, always, and disclose.
So it's my, so my, so my other question, if it, what is the responsibility of another committee member? If you feel that someone else has a conflict, that there's no, is there a responsibility? In terms of continuing the vote?
Committee member with conflicts, there is no, there is no absolute obligation, however. We act as a committee and Unis certainly doesn't want to hit for us publicly. In this, that people inadvertently engage it, so it makes sense if you have a conflict of interest. Or if you perceive one for someone else, to remind them to contact the state ethics commission, get an opinion. And remember, the opinions you get are based on the facts, so don't hide the facts from the state ethics commission. When you're asking them whether or not you can do something, because if you hide some of the facts, you're gonna, then the facts are a little bit different, you're gonna get a different answer. And this one, you know, you could get fined, ten thousand dollars for each violation sometimes. So it makes absolutely no sense to do this, like no violations of conflict of interest. All right, we're gonna go open meeting on executive sessions. Open meeting law applies to all beams of the school committee and every one of its subcommittees. So it only applies to deliberations and that's oral written communications through any medium that influence email, texting, social media. On public business within the school committee or subcommittee's jurisdiction. And it's between or among a quorum of the school committee or subcommittee. So a quorum is a majority of the members, a majority of a subcommittee of two is two. So can't talk to the other person except, you know, say you have policy subcommittee of two members. You cannot have a conversation privately about policies that you're gonna be discussing, you have to do it in an open session because of quorum, two is new. Um, and never, any multiple member committee is gonna be subject to this. One-way communications through quorum of the committee can be a deliberation, even if nobody else responds. I wanna tell you my opinion on starting high school at nine o'clock. Can I send it to all of you? I violated the open view law, even if nobody's responding. A meeting is a deliberation by a public body with respect to any matter within a public jurisdiction, not necessarily anything that you're looking at now, but anything that you might look at. That's within your jurisdiction. You don't do, I'm just gonna make this up, uh, you don't give permits for votes in the harbor. So if you all wanna talk about that, feel free, it's not within your jurisdiction. But if it comes up that has something to do with, anything to do with the schools, then it's within your jurisdiction. Require, so Unis has to require a quorum of a committee or a subcommittee. You have, you should follow adopted rules of order, and I don't know, always do, but it makes sense to follow Robert's rules. Whichever version you want to accept, because when you have difficult conversations to have, if you're always following Robert's rules, they can have things on board and nice and clean. If you only do it with a difficult conversation, it's not always the most effective punch to sort of implement the rules.
I just have a quick question around it, so I'm still getting through all my literature to to read, but. Is there any possibility where Robert's rules would say one thing and Commonwealth, uh, open meeting laws would be a little different? And if so, does one over override, like is there a hierarchy that you need to follow?
No.
If there's any conflict?
Law is about post in a meeting. And and notice of the meeting, the agenda that's gonna be there, Robert's rules is that happens once you open the meeting. And have it adjourned. But it's not about, um, it's not about how you get to that part of the meeting. Robert's rules is really about how you are operating during the meeting versus getting publicly posted, the agenda posted, um, open, get closer.
So then maybe policy might be a little bit more of an issue, but perhaps if we had a policy.
You could, right, but then you follow your policy, you don't have to follow Robert's rules, that's not a law, it's just an easier way. Most, most of our town meetings are followed by Robert's rules, nice to follow the same procedure. Most, most of our town meetings are followed by Robert's rules. Nice to follow the same procedure.
Uh, but we're not legally obligated, you're saying, to do that?
We are not.
Okay.
But if we do have a policy to follow Robert's rule.
You're following a policy.
It is, yeah.
Right. Okay. And most people don't want to develop a whole rule of operation, so it makes sense to follow Robert's rules. Um, you need to, public comment comes up a lot, and you need to comply with this policy on public comment, and you need to make sure that it is consistent with the law. Um, we'll talk about that in a minute. Posting is required for all meetings, including all subcommittee meetings. They have to be posted at least forty hours in advance, excluding Saturdays, Sundays, and legal holidays, if that counts, in that forty-eight hours. You have to have the name of the committee or the subcommittee, the date, time of the meeting, the location of the meeting, including the street address, even though everybody knows, like, they're meeting at the high school, everybody knows where the high school is, but you still have to have the street address in there. The room number or name, auditorium, library, room four oh one, two oh one, whatever. And if the meeting is virtual, the link, and then the agenda for the meeting. I think that's pretty clear. And you, Town Clerk again is responsible for making sure those are posted. Uh, a gathering is not a meeting. Members do not deliberate. And the gathering is an onsite inspection. So for example, if you were going to go up on the roof of the high school to take a look at the roof, that is not a meeting. You're not deliberating up there. You could have deliberated a meeting, whether or not it needs to be replaced, but if you wanted to look at it. Or during the construction of a school building, you would be looking at that, you know, and that's not an open meeting. Uh, it's not an open meeting if you're at a public or private gathering, holiday party. Um, Fourth of July celebration, and they're all gathered, um, so long as you don't deliberate. Training programs like what we're doing right now are not subject to the open meeting law. Uh, the attendance of a corner of a meeting of another public body such as a meeting, right? Um. Public comment during open meetings, so.
We can back that up again. Um, so we usually post our, a meeting at count meeting.
Because you might actually deliberate.
So if the visiting members communicate only by open part, oh, okay. So if we needed, that's for that.
That's a, that's just a safety in case you needed to deliberate.
So that last sentence, if the visiting members communicate only by open participation in the meeting on those matters discussed by the host body.
So if you're, for example, not, you don't have an agenda, you're not doing the, the town meeting, and they're asking about your budget, and three of you speak about the budget. You already approved the budget, you're just explaining it. Um, Unis already posted, you're okay.
Without posting.
Without posting. However, if at town meeting, you also need to have a school committee meeting because you needed to take action before town meeting, not in particular, say, you needed to, you, you were given an extra, I'm going to make it up, fifty thousand dollars, and you wanted to add it to your budget request, or you wanted to amend your, your request. Those kinds of things would have to be, you have to have a meeting, at town meeting, to have that deliberation.
Can we go back to the slide on agendas? Wait, no. This, the posting is required.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, sorry. Can you speak a little bit about the guidelines for amending agendas within that forty-eight hour period and what the criteria are to do so?
Don't amend agenda forty-eight hours. However, sometimes, I, uh, that you didn't anticipate. So it might be, oh, you didn't think that the custodians were going to ratify their contract. You'd like to get it going because sooner we approve it and they take up the race, right? Or let's say you didn't know that the HVA system, HVA system was going to break yesterday. Or that, um, the superintendent decided to resign. Uh, you know, things that happened within that forty-eight hours, the chair could not have reasonably known, can be added. Um, but if it can wait till the next meeting, it's a better practice with HVA. Should wait till the following meeting, but some things can't wait.
So for those things that can't wait, do you, is there a process we have to, I've seen where you could suspend, you suspend, do you have to suspend Robert's rules? I've seen that, hold some of the policy, you don't have to do something like that.
Posted this, so let's say.
Well, I'm saying you're in a meeting, a meeting is tomorrow.
If you have an agenda posted, that agenda, even if you posted it five hours before the meeting, you had to send it to the town clerk who had to amend your agenda. Then you could talk about that topic item. But if you didn't amend your agenda, you shouldn't talk about anything that's not on your agenda at your meeting. Now, you could talk about putting it on a future meeting, which you shouldn't be delivering.
And there's no emergency.
If there's not, there are very few true emergencies, right? Building floods, that's an emergency. There's a shooter, emergency, um, but.
So in our case, perhaps, you know, like if a, a member resigns, for example.
Not an emergency.
Not an emergency, okay.
No, because you have thirty days to notify the town of that member residing. And you do want to make sure you do it before that thirty days, because otherwise the town will make sense without you. I know, and I know there's one.
You can, you can bring up new business in new business, but it would not be deliberated.
You could ask them to put on the next agenda.
Okay.
Or a future agenda might always be the next one.
So but just hypothetically, let's say yesterday, the superintendent resigned, and we had this happening this morning. We would need to amend the agenda, the town clerk, when they opened at eight AM, so that we could properly deliberate.
About next steps or at least.
Steps in this meeting.
Right.
If they post it in time, it's something like, you get it.
If not, I think, under new business, we will be addressing this at our next meeting, right, of what people know.
Yep.
So we already went through gathering, sound meeting, if it's a training.
Mm-hmm.
So it's probably should. Public comment during open session lanes. You are not required to have public comment events, um, at every meeting unless your policy requires it. Um, every policy should limit the overall period of time for it, because those committees who don't sometimes have two hours of redundant communications. And that means that you start your business sometimes at, you know, nine thirty at night. If you're tired, you, you have other jobs and things to do. So it, it makes sense to limit it. Uh, requires speakers. I usually sign in some way, so there's an orderly way for the chair to recognize that in that uncommon order. Encourage, but not require speakers to present their remarks in a respectful manner. You cannot control, people want to be disrespectful or use profanity unless they're making a threat, a real threat. You don't let them be who they are. Um, limit the time allowed for speaker. Usually not, three minutes is usually sort of the norm everywhere, but that means you enforce it. You don't give everyone three minutes and fifteen seconds, and you don't, because you like what they're saying, and you don't give somebody two minutes and forty-five seconds because you don't like what you're saying. Um, you can't limit topics to those items within, within your authority, because it doesn't, otherwise somebody's going to come and, you know, read their pizza menu to you as advertisement. Um, reserve the right of the chair to terminate speech that's not constitutionally protected. Well, that's very little. Very little is not First Amendment protected, right? So unless someone is saying, you know, I brought a gun here and I'm going to shoot you, other than, you know, a, a serious legitimate threat, no. The committee may welcome written comments in lieu, or in addition to the speaker's three-minute presentation. So there's another way for people to get their communications to you. And I always want to remind you, and maybe it's from my years, it's not legal, it's, but it's just experience. Sometimes the loudest voices come to your school committee meetings, but they're not the majority. Um, and all of you were not elected to comply with the loudest voices, or the people, or the, or the most people who show up at a meeting. You were elected to use your judgment and make decisions based on your best judgment of what you think is best for your school district. That's what you should do. It's fine to get all of the inputs of different stakeholders, of course, but at the end of the day, the number of people who show up for one particular issue doesn't necessarily mean there are actually ten times as many at home who are afraid to come and speak on the other side of that issue. So I just want to remind you of that because the public comment sometimes makes it seem like everybody's agreeing with this public comment, but sometimes very much orchestrated by the viewpoint of the people we're speaking.
It's not, if you go back for a second, but it obscures, I thought we couldn't.
You can't unless they're, I mean, look, a lot of tendencies are not necessarily profanity, and it's completely hard to find that. So if you can reserve the right to do it, but obviously the chair, it, it, it's three minutes. Let them say their piece and get out. It's, I, I think it's easier that way. Also, there's no such thing as, I'm good, this is not like the seven, I'm going to encourage someplace else, so I'm going to give you my three minutes, and you're going to take someone else's three minutes, and you get thirty minutes. No, you got three minutes. That's it. You're done. The only time, and this has never come up, but the only time that you might need to have more than three minutes to make it fair would be if someone needed an interpreter, such as a sign language interpreter, so they were signing and someone had to speak, so they, there is a little bit more of a delay, but that's not, that's very rare.
If someone is speaking during public comment and sharing private information, you know, is that about another person? Is that something where the committee should be saying, this isn't appropriate? You can't talk about a personnel matter in front of the committee?
No, let them say whatever they want to say. Yeah, and, and I know that, that you will get unless the person they're talking about will be unhappy.
Yep.
But, you know, that's what happens, like, if it's about schools, and it's within your jurisdiction, as opposed to, I want to talk about, to about the Lynn Public Schools. No, you're in the wrong place. But, um, within our jurisdiction, that's it, I would say. And then sometimes people come and they disclose the most intimate information about their child's IDPs, phylofore plans, which is now available for the whole world to see forever. And I feel bad that that, they're disclosing it, not us. We just move on. And you shouldn't engage, because if you start engaging, then you're deliberating, and that wasn't on the agenda. So there's no deliberations. You just go for next, next speaker, and it's not, thank you so much for coming, Liz, and then the next speaker. Okay, you're done. Go. Like, none of that, it's the same thing. Next speaker, next speaker, your time is up, next speaker. Okay, we've now finished public comment. That way there's no, oh, sort of, I like what you said, I didn't like what you said inference.
What if someone approaches the twenty members physically?
Okay, they make a threat, then you have them removed. They get a warning. The chair will give a warning, and after the second, you know, the first warning, if they're not told them to be seated or to be silent, if they interrupt. And if they don't, then you have to have them removed. You might have to pause the meeting while you get a police officer to remove them. Uh, I would say that, when I, when I was on the school committee, there were times where I would say we had some hot button items. So we had, for example, a first run and a second run bus schedule, same bus, first run, second. You talk about changing first run versus second run, their standing remote. So if we're going to talk about that, instead of putting it in public comment, hold a separate meeting, like, like also what you do for the budget, like, have a separate meeting, let's hear it all from everybody, right? And everybody gets to speak, and I didn't limit it to like three minutes, you might have a little bit more time just to talk. And then we heard all the person comments. If, oh, before Labor Day, after Labor Day started, back in the nineties, that was a big deal. Um, not so much anymore, but it was then. Um, apparently I can change math and, and English language arts curriculum with, like, plenty of empty seats, but not the bus schedule. So I would tell you that because if you have a hot button item, it almost makes sense to have a separate meeting and just hear about it, because if you don't, you're just, you're trying to cram it into the little public comment. It makes everybody frustrated, and it's not, I mean, it's not your job to frustrate the community either. You're serving the community. So here we have to say, think about it, and then move on, but at least devote a meeting to it or a group part of a meeting to it, because you're never going to get through that kind of thing in public comment. Every community has its own hot button items. Watch out for serial communications. Communication among fewer than a forum, but as you keep going, they used to call it the gate of telephone. So, you know, Al calls Kate, then Kate calls Henry and says what Al said, and then Henry calls Jen. You have now violated the open, or even though neither, none of you talked to a forum. Uh, you can circumvent it by having someone else, by private messaging, then electronically email, text message, all of that. All right, so we have nine through thirteen. So you guys, Shen and Henry are going to do nine, ten, and you two will do one, twelve, we'll do thirteen together.
Two years for a meeting without, like, we're.
Yeah.
Sure.
There's no problem.
So, stuck as well.
So, yeah.
Yes, yeah. What I keep is enjoying these scenarios.
Oh, now we get this.
Yeah. Bring the delivery thing.
Um, just.
Electricity in the meeting.
Yep, just putting it out there, which you do.
Yes, yes.
And you know the draw set.
Yeah.
Chair Cortland is the chair of the best school committee three days before that, I currently lost a couple letters, so at the next school committee meeting, Chair Cortland sends materials to all of the school committee members related to the budget and summary documents regarding a new math curriculum being proposed by the assistant superintendent for teaching and learning. The chair includes the following in the communication. The attached documents are for our meeting on June twenty-fourth and will be discussed at that meeting. You are reminded that to comply with the open meeting law, you cannot do or reply all through this email, and you do not communicate with me or each other about these matters until we are in our meeting. Any open meeting law violations with this, no, she's just sending you the information. The old days, we actually got it in an envelope, packets, so we had to open up the meeting. Now we've sent it by email, but it's, it's for the meeting. There's no, no opinions about it, nothing. Empire is a member of the best school committee. He is an avid social media user. Empire frequently posts about school committee matters. Empire posted that Fuji, another member of the school committee, and Empire are going to make a motion to add twenty minutes per day to recess for students in the lower grades because kids don't get enough exercise and free time anymore. The other three members of the best school committee are followers of Empire's social media and read Empire's posts. Member Fuji gave Empire's post a thumbs up. Member Gollum posts a large thumbs down and says, are we a violation of the open meeting law LOLs? And that's laugh out loud, I believe, although the first time I saw it, I asked my kids, I thought they sent it to me, I thought it was lots of love, but it's LOLs, laugh out loud. Yeah, so I, there were some other ones they sent me, and then I found out what they were, I said, I sent that to you, love it. Member John Gold posts a heart. Chair Cortland has viewed the post's response. I don't know, but probably, jealous question about the open meeting law. Is there an open meeting law issue with these communications?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, they have, they have been found, that just emoji symbols, they, they count.
Well, the post itself is the violation thing.
The post. We, everybody, you have to be really careful about the idea of posting and then having followers that are all in the same committee. You have a quorum. Deliberation on topics for future agendas. Member Empire wants to put the twenty minutes per day on additional recess for students in elementary school on the agenda for the next meeting of the best public schools. During new business, member Empire moves to add this topic to the next meeting. Member Fuji sends the motion. The chair asks if there is any discussion on the motion to add this topic to the next school committee meeting. Member John Gold is recognized by the chair and says she totally agrees with Empire and Fuji and supports more recess time. Member Gala is recognized by the chair and says that without lengthening the school day for students, the twenty minutes will meet to come out of academics, and this will have an impact on learning time. So member Gala does not support increasing recess time. Is there an open meeting law violation here? Yeah, because it's not posted. They are talking about their opinions and deliberating on it.
Thank you.
So this is pretty much the same. Member Empire reports as a liaison to the district's CPAT.
Down below.
Here, okay. Member Empire wants to put twenty minutes of day, same kind of thing, moves to add a topic to the next meeting. The chair asks if there's any discussion on the motion to add the topic to the next school committee meeting. Member Gala is recognized. Chair says it would be better to have it at a later meeting so that the administration can provide the committee with information. Member John Gold is recognized by the chair and says that she cannot attend the next meeting and ask that it be placed on a different date. The motion is amended, but the committee votes to place the topic on the agenda for the second meeting in September. Any violation? No, the scheduling, scheduling is not, the open meeting law, and they can talk about it. Didn't give their opinions, they just said, hey, I want to move it up. Thirteen, we're going to do this one together. Member Empire's report is liaison to the district CPAT group. You all know what CPAT is, right? Okay. Member Empire said. Okay, member Empire said that some parents on the CPAP suggested that. Oh, special education teachers could have paid release time for their teaching duties to attend CPAP meetings during their workday. Member Fuji hears this and makes a motion to provide paid release time to all educators who want to attend CPAP meetings that occurred during their workday. Before the chair could say anything, member Empire seconded the motion, what should the chair do and what? What do you all think?
Well, it's subject to bargaining.
It is subject to quite a bargaining, absolutely, and it was on the agenda, no. He was giving a report, liaison report, you can't, that's all of a sudden talk about that, not to mention, if one had. Administrator input onto the IPO, who's going to be with the children if all these people get to go to a meeting during their workday?
So what should the chair, I mean, do this?
We are not taking that motion, we can, you know, that's for another day, not on the agenda, we can't talk about it, move on.
It doesn't matter for a second, it, it's just.
People should sort of pause a moment before making a motion and seconding, making sure it's on the agenda, not on the posted agenda, let's not go there. Executive session meetings, uh, there is required to convene an open session prior to meeting an executive session. Even if the only thing you're going to do is take a vote to go into executive session. While you're in an open session, the committee votes to meet an executive session and must state the purpose for the executive session. And a vote has to be taken by roll call vote, and the votes of each member have, even if it's unanimous, each member's vote has to be recorded. Uh, prior to meeting an executive session, the chair has to announce the vote. And the reason for going into, reason, sometimes reasons, because it can be plural, for going into executive session and. Uh, whether or not the committee will be reconvening in open session, that's important to remember, people want to hang around only to find out you aren't coming back. Especially prior to doing the hybrid meetings, where people were actually sitting here, and then they wait for you to go. Your executive session, and then for hours, and then you didn't come back. So, purpose one, this is when the committee is going to discuss an individual, which could be an employee. Could be a public officer, could be a staff member, reputation, character, physical condition, mental health, discipline or dismissal. Complaints or charges against them, that can be in executive session. Open session, if you're talking about professional competence, that's why you always do the superintendent's evaluation in open sessions. It's about professional competence, but executive session for reputation, character, physical or mental health. Uh, at the individual's request, however, even if you go into, go into executive session, the individual can require that it be held, hold it session. If they, if you hold an executive session, that person has the right to have written notice at least forty eight hours prior to the executive session. Possibly it doesn't count, they get individual notes, I'm going to talk about you, so therefore I never noticed about it, to be present. During the conversations that involve this person, to have their counsel there or a representative. For advising, we call that the potted fence person, they get to sit there and whisper in the person's ear, but they don't get to speak to you. To speak on their own path, and to create an independent record, they can record it or have a court recorder transcript, they can, their phone out and record it. Those are their rights, uh. Purposes two and three are the ones you use probably most often, strategy sessions of preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel. So when you're talking about negotiations with superintendent's contract, or to conduct collective bargaining agreements. Uh, also, purpose, uh, three is strategy with respect to collective bargaining, I don't know why they just didn't put it all in the same one, but they did. Uh, or litigation, so if an open meeting will have a detrimental effect on your bargaining or litigation. And the chair, if you ever go in for purpose three, the chair must stay in open session, and it needs recorded, that, um. You're going to go into executive session to discuss strategy and preparation for, let's say, litigation. It, because an open session may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of a, of a committee. You need to say that in an open session, and it's had to record that. There are other, uh, number of other ones, security, for example, if you're going to deploy security. Which is, you're not going to have an open session, everybody will be able to go around them, but one of the ones they use, should be using a lot is purpose seven. Purpose seven is for, uh, any general special law that requires you to be in executive session. You go into purpose seven, seven to approve, to review, approve, and to disclose. Or not disclose, depending on when you want to release them, the executive session minutes, you should keep those up to date, right? And you should review the minutes in executive session to determine if you can disclose them. Every set of minutes, if you have executive session and open session, and there should be two sets of minutes, the open session minutes, which are always. Disclosable, there's nothing in open session that doesn't get disclosed in the minutes, and the executive session, they all have to have the date time placed. The members present or absent, um, and anyone participating remotely, if somebody's remote. List all the documents used at the meeting, discuss the summary of each and every topic, now, sometimes we don't get to everything. It gets late, or we don't have the information, or somebody is, is going to give us a presentation on something, but the agenda listed. One of the things that I've noticed is that people sometimes go back and say, oh, your minutes aren't good, because look, the agenda had five items, and you only have four items, your minutes. You might list that other item as, this item was on the agenda. That's not liberation, and so that way, everything changes, it's not like you did something you weren't supposed to do, or you left something out in your minutes. Um, and because, because we all like to remember, you have to go back and watch it, someone was, and now you have to report it, but. If you want to watch the whole meeting again, you could just look at the minutes, say, oh, no, we didn't discuss this, there's the minutes, same here. Every motion, I found out the other day that one of my committee members of the district thought that, um. If the motion didn't pass, it didn't need to be in the minutes, all motions made and. Stuck it in and voted on, need to be recorded in the minutes, even if they failed.
Just to confirm, if we say we had a meeting that was basically entirely executive session, there would be two sets of minutes. One, reflecting the open session vote to enter executive session, and those are publicly available minutes. And then we have a set of executive session minutes that remain protected until.
And the open session minutes would have the roll call vote, the motion to go in, it'd have the, if it was, um, to talk about litigation, for example. Strategy that the chair stated that said, you know, um, that the open session might have detrimental effect on the litigation position of the committee. It would say whether or not you were coming in or out, back into open session or not, would say that, most of the time we don't, just because public. You know, we try to do all the other business first, and then put the executive session at the end, or we do the executive session very much at the very beginning earlier. And then start the open session later on, um, but that always has to have a discussion, your minutes off every topic. And every motion made, and those, of those motions. Best School Committee went into executive session at its April third meeting for the following purposes. Purpose three, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation with Nate neighbor, with quickest pink fence and flagpole on school grounds just outside his property line. And purpose two, to conduct collective bargaining with that, the best association of teachers. The litigation with Nate neighbor included with a settlement where neighbor signed an agreement, as part of the agreement, the town of Best. Removed the flagpole and fence from the school grounds, Nate relocated the fence can on his property and the flagpole well within his backyard. Nate wrote the town a check for three thousand four hundred fifty two dollars and forty five cents, the cost the town incurred in removing the fence and flagpole from the school grounds. Negotiations with that are ongoing, and it seems they will not be resolved soon, but after the negotiations with that. The committee will stand up negotiations with other bargaining units, should the committee release the executive session minutes from April third, and if so, which parts? Can anything come out? Yeah, exactly, Nate, neighbor, it's done, there's nothing that's over with, right, he put his flagpole and his fence. Outside of his property line, we took a look and said, hey, get off my school grounds, and they, and he paid to have it moved, because we're not letting him go on school grounds to remove something. That's fine, the stuff of that, I get. Requests for open session minutes, well.
Put a question on that? So would the, um, uh, minutes that, that would be really approved and released be redacted?
Yes.
So you'd have the full minutes, or just redact?
Yeah. And you need to make sure it's redacted in the way that can be unredacted. Or.
Fit, but physically.
Physically.
Yeah, 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 got it.
Yeah.
I would say the redaction should be the actual, in the doc, in the, digitally in the document, not manually.
Yeah, and one of the other ways you can do it is you can always, your minutes, just start them on a new page for, in the topic, so that the redactions to them are a lot easier.
Yeah.
Requests for minutes, this, I always want to bring this up, because you have to provide copies to the requester within ten calendar days. Who thinks that when they did the public records law, they looked at the open meeting law, they might have made, say, like, ten business days. Public records, ten business days, and minutes are public records, but. Open session minutes have to be given within ten calendar days, which is not the same as ten business days, very annoying, very confusing, and I don't know why they didn't do that, but I think they just forgot about it. Uh, so, and they, whether or not they've been approved, so in draft form too. I don't know that there's as many requests anymore, only because they can just go watch it on, on the video, but. Uh, requests for executive session, the committee has not recently reviewed them, they have to plan to review them at the next meeting, so I have to add that to the agenda for the seven. Uh, and when you do the purpose seven, you have to list all of the meetings minutes, just list the dates that you're going to be reviewing. Notify the requestor within ten days of the request that the committee needs to review them, and after they view, notify the quester of the outcome, oh, yes, you can have a vet. Neighbor sleep, or no, you can't, because it's. Texting and emailing during.
And I, it was interesting, I, I was reviewing some of the policies, I believe these requests go through the superintendent.
They should.
Not the.
They should actually go through your records access officer, but I'm not sure that she actually knows, most people just think it's ten business days, even the requesters, and, well. And business days, ten calendar days, it's a few aren't, two days earlier, um, but yes, they should go through them. Texting and emailing during the meeting, so you're all on camera all the time, everybody sees you. If you start texting on your phone or emailing on your phone, people see that, and guess what they ask for? Copies of them, some things don't, um, during a meeting, don't want to do it, it looks like you have your private meeting, like, oh, I'm going to text you, and then you're going to text in. Before you know it, you're having an executive session within the open session, don't do it, you need to text your spouse or your kids or something. Step out of the meeting, do your text, come back in. Uh, it's advisable not to engage in text, you know, or other electronic communications during meetings, because they, people do ask for them. Information can be distributed to committee members by email prior to a committee meeting, if you comply with the open meeting law, you're going to. Hi, why are you back, you're going to make sure that you say, don't do a reply all, people, you don't need to say received, you don't need to say thank you. If you're just distributing the packet, it's like you picked up the old fashioned yellow envelope, that hole in paper that you had to read. I always, in the nineties, on the school committees, I'd say, wait, hold it, I was very, but. I used to see some, as a chair, I used to see some of my members just opening the packet, first time, it broke my heart, there's no way that it could be prepared. Um, so you want to be prepared for the meeting, she wanted to read it all, but she don't need to do a reply all. Recording, the open meeting law allows anybody to record the meeting, so long as it's not disruptive, uh, during an open session. So they video and audio record it, uh, and they can transmit it, you know, they can have Facebook Live or whatever they want while the meeting is going on. The chair has to inform attendees of any recordings being made at the meeting, and that includes recordings by cable TV or whoever else. And, and I can't imagine that people are not recording it, but they're supposed to tell you, so they shouldn't be in the back recording it without having. First told you, so that you can say, this meeting is being recorded, so. Social media communications among the school committee members on social media are subject to open meeting law. So posts and comments on social media may be deliberations, we talked about that example with the thumbs up, thumbs down, and the heart. Uh, remember posts on social media that the committee on matters within the jurisdiction may be subject to retention and disclosure under the public records law. Alright, uh, we got fourteen and fifteen, so you two are going to do fourteen, and Jen and Henry are going to do number fifteen. Full slides for the, for the exercises.
Just fifteen.
Oh, fifteen, I'm sorry.
Yeah, doing it during the meeting is definitely not, you're right, but so doing this afterwards.
Yeah, if you didn't.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Although I would, I think the better way to, the equation being, what are their thoughts around it?
Okay, fourteen, during the open session meeting of the five-member best school committee, members Fuji, Gala, and Empire are texting each other. About how they plan to vote on an upcoming agenda item, additionally, member Empire texts the president of the local parent group. Who is attending the meeting, asking how the group wants Empire to vote, what are the open meeting law issues here?
Or the first, the first sentence is a violation of open meeting law, because it's a private deliberation.
Private deliberation during an open session, and the second one also is a private deliberation, so not, not a deliberation, but a communication. That's supposed to be open, no secret communications during a meeting. And even when you're not doing it, it looks like you're doing it, a couple of you are texting home saying, oh, meeting's running late, or. I forgot to get milk, or the kids have, you know, don't forget to sign the permission slip for the kids. They don't know, the audience doesn't know what you're texting, and it looks like you're texting each other, don't do it. Empire is a member of the best school committee, he was at home scrolling through social media and saw that the superintendent at the best public school is a finalist for a position at the Good District. The Good School Committee is meeting at the end of the week to make a decision, the best school committee is not scheduled to be for another two weeks. Texts the other school committee members on the best school committee, says, Super is a finalist in Good, do we want to counter Good's offer to keep Super? What are the open meeting law issues with Empire's text message?
First thing is your superintendent didn't tell you. The first problem is your superintendent didn't tell your, any, any of you that he was, or she was a finalist.
True.
Before it was announced, so, but yes, this is an open meeting.
Open meeting law violation, right, and is this an emergency?
No, but you could ask the chair to, to request to schedule.
This is not an emergency, if I said emergency, can't hold, uh, school of this building because it's flooded. Uh, that's an emergency, could not plan for it, you will be, it was firing a school building, emergency. Uh, you know, this, not an emergency, but forty eight hours is not that long. Alright, any questions about the open meeting law before we do something with public records? And this is going to be quick, because this is an easy one, you don't respond to public records requests, not your job. You have enough to do, do not respond to them, don't provide it, even if you have it, send people to the records access officer, so. Massachusetts law has a public records law, you know, government in the sunshine here, we will let everybody see all of our documents, photographs, videos, emails. Text messages, by the way, anything a district employee or committee member is part of their work. Unless it's, fits into one of the exceptions, and that includes those text messaging emails I've been telling you about, so. Don't use your personal accounts either, so I'm going to have to search those to respond, or people don't want to. Public records law also applies to, only applies to existing records, we do not have to create a record. Someone says, I want this in, you know, in this particular format, if we have it in that format, fine, they can have it that way, if they don't, they get it whatever format we have. Uh, everything is presumed to be a public record unless a specific exemption applies, and there are twenty one stated exemptions. The district records access officer, I think it's Lisa in the district area, uh, responds to public records requests, and. Even if you have something, let's say they just want a copy of, say, a high school student handbook, public record, we have it, you have it. You could send it, but here's the problem with doing that. The records access officer has no record of, when she gets a request, she has to know when the request came in, what the request was for, when she responded to it. We don't want you to do this, that's the records access officer's job. So if you receive a request for documents or information, inform the requester that all requests need to go through the records access officer. This comes up a lot, now, that's different than, you know, the chair being asked of something from the reporter, that you might give them information about last night's meeting. Uh, open meeting, of course, but you should, and also, committee members can submit requests for public records. If the committee wants some information, the committee as a whole asks the word, if individuals want it. If individuals want it, then you have to submit your public records request. The district can issue a response to requests that live on ten business days, but that doesn't mean they provide the information in ten business days. Uh, it might be that they're telling them there's a fee, and people have to pay for that, um. I, I'm a great believer, when we can't charge a fee, to charge the fee, because otherwise, people are just asking for stuff over and over again. Sometimes it's like, right there, some of the stuff's on the website, so it's easy. Uh, if we just deny a request for one of those twenty-one reasons, which I'm not gonna bore you with today. Because you're not gonna be responding to them, uh, we have to tell them how that exemption applies. We can't just say, it's exempt, we have to say which exemption and how it applies to that particular record, or that part of the record. Best practices, be aware that sending and receiving information, they need that the information becomes a public record. And so only put writing information that you would not mind being included in a response to requests for public records. Don't use your school committee email address to conduct any personal business. Because there's no expectation of privacy in any of your emails from the school committee. Uh, that the district's email. And remember, there's no expectation of privacy, absolutely not, and the records access officer may have IT searched. All of your emails, district emails, because they have to respond, and they're not gonna ask you to go searching for them.
And the flip side to number two is that, I very, occasion will get someone emailing me personally. Question, and I usually refer it to my school committee and respond to that.
Yep.
So there's no trail, no need to go back to my personal.
Exactly, exactly. You don't want people in your personal Gmail or whatever.
I mean, people do, because it's, you know, we're a small town, like people, you know, I have one particular person who always.
Because that's what pops up in your auto fill, yeah. All right, we have floated this one together, Ralph Porter has an online local newsletter and frequently covers school committee issues. Ralph observed two members of the best school committee sending text messages and emails during a recent open session school committee meeting. Ralph sends Gallup, a member of the best school committee, an email requesting the text messages and email communications from members Fucci and Empire. On June nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, between the hours of seven and nine fourteen AM, which is the date and time of the open session meeting. How should Gallup respond?
Do you send a request to the, the officer, or do you ask?
Send the request, tell us to go to the R A O.
Yeah.
Like, you're not gonna, because if you start doing the sending it, then you're doing their work.
Okay.
Public records go through the records access officer, her, her contact information is on her website, oh, here it is, I would give them. I would mind giving the records access officer a request, I don't think you should be having to submit it to the R A O, their job. Uh, and what will the R A O have to do?
Her job.
Yes.
Whatever that is.
Ask for those emails and text messages during that period of time. So, you know, you really don't want R A Os having to read things, private things between you and your spouse, because you decided to do it during a meeting. Uh, for worse yet, it's not about that.
What if it isn't just during a meeting, what if you get a request that I want to see all emails between school committee apps and her spouse?
Her spouse, no. No, school committee and the spouse, no, but you could get it between all the school committee members.
What about school committee member and?
All the other school committee members I've had.
Pretended. Or.
Get those.
Um, another person in public.
You might get those. Request, and you might, so that's why I'm telling you, like, you just need, if you don't want to see it in your newspaper, or, you know, all over the social media. Sounds, sounds still work, there's so much better, the record of them. Said, if people say things, I mean, sometimes meetings go on and people say things, they, they text things. Well. Let's say unflattering comments, though, people or presenters, they will get them.
But is that? Releaseable, I don't, I mean, the only thing that should be released is anything that is germane to.
Right, so I have a presenter coming here to the school committee, and some school committee member texts another school committee member, this is BS, or, oh, this is, you know, whatever.
But if you say, I don't, you know, she's got an ugly scarf on, um, which you don't. Uh, if you have, she had, she has an ugly scarf on, like, that would not be released.
It would be, if it was during a school committee member about a presenter.
Because I thought it was only about what is specific to what you're deliberating or potentially.
If you make a tend to, uh, hey, what is this scarf, this is really ugly.
It is not, it is not, I love him scarf. Because it's gold.
Why not know whether it's gonna be hundred degrees in the room, or fifty degrees in the room, so I brought a sweater. So, yes, if you want to fight that, someone could make that request, because you're at a meeting. It's posted, and anything you do at the meeting is posted, can be like that.
But what if she texts me that this afternoon?
Text between the two of you.
Between us, yeah.
Between us, yeah. I mean, if she texts you, hey, um, if your kids are playing soccer together, now I'll pick up you.
That's, yeah.
But, yeah, if that's something that happens in the school committee.
Yeah.
Yeah. What about if, um, you're in a meeting and, like, say, like, um, you know, Henry writes a note, passes it over to Al.
Oh.
That's, that's the same.
Public record, please don't, if you need to say something like, hey, Henry, can we have a brief bio break, or whatever you want to call it here? That's fine, we can need to have a little break for five minutes, that's fine to ask. Um, but if you pass a note, oh, everybody, everybody wants to know this, and it now, it's kind of like when you're in school, and your kids pass notes, they want. No notes. All right, school committee roles and responsibilities, we may have covered some of this with M A S D. You have lots of responsibilities, why, why are you not gonna take on the R A O's job either, right? You hire, you evaluate, determine the superintendent of schools, and you have certain other positions that you appoint. You adopt the curriculum, you establish policies, and you set goals, review and approve the school budget. You engage in collective bargaining, you set gifts and grants for educational purposes. You establish your policies, and those can be in lots of different places, people think of policies as just in their policy yet. Um, it's the policy manual, which, by the way, was with yours, looks like M A S Cs. Which is kind of like when I say it's a one size fits all dress, doesn't fit everybody very well. But covers you up, but, like, sometimes you need to tweak it a little for your own. Yes, their picture, you have one size fits all dress, yes. Um, student handbooks, you play the collective bargaining agreements and past practices. Your budget, your strategic plans, your mission, vision statements, your management school committee, to find your policies, that's everywhere. You, your actions, though, only occur at properly hosted meetings, they can't occur anywhere else. And so the school committee members cannot deliberate outside of the meeting, and absent express authorization or vote or policy. The school committee individuals members are not authorized to speak on behalf of the committee. So if you have a policy that says the chair is the spokesperson, or the chair of the subcommittee is the spokesperson, that's who speaks. And let's say that chair hasn't voted no on something that passed, so four of the five members voted yes, chair voted no. When the chair speaks on it, chair has to give the, and spokesperson to the committee, that committees view, even if it's not the chair's personal view.
But committee members can speak for themselves.
You could speak for yourself and just make it clear, all right, we're gonna do, uh, let's do this one, change it up a little. Anthony, you're gonna do seventeen on your own, Kate and Henry are gonna do eighteen, and Jen and John are gonna do nineteen.
Wait, we're doing nineteen?
I left two on your own.
Yes, good luck. I don't know if I'd recommend that normally, but I got this.
In terms of charging the course requirements, and you submitted it to the plan, but. That's what Jen did, or do they send, does that mean?
M A S C said they, they do that for, for you, yeah.
Okay. All set, all right. School committee member Gala wants to add a second recess for all elementary students, not just those in the lower grades. Chair, the chair, add the topic to the open session agenda. Although Gala got a second to her motion to add a second daily recess when it came time for a vote, Gala was the only member voting in favor of adding a second recess. The other members voted no, because the best elementary school was just meeting nine hundred hours of structured learning time required by law. And the second daily recess would have reduced the learning times below the required nine hundred hours. Gala's motion failed, after the meeting, Gala requested the chair put the topic of the second recess on the agenda for the next meeting. So that members could reconsider their position of voting again, what should the chair do?
So it's interesting, my first reaction was, if someone requests something like that, that I would accommodate it, but then upon further introspection. I think this would fall under the role of the chair and his or her discretion to whether they do it or not, in this particular case, I would say no.
No.
You know, maybe we visit sometime in the future, but, you know, within one meeting, no, that's not.
Only members voted no, and only member voted yes asked for it, with the Robert's rules, you'd actually have to have one of the members who voted no.
But they could. One of the prevailing members could, at a future date.
Right, they could, but the, the one who lost shouldn't. And, and really can't, if you follow Robert's rules, if you don't, you could just say no, because we just voted that, we don't need to spend time. If you have to reconsider every single motion for a disappointing member, you don't have any business done, you gotta move on, it's the will of the committee.
What if there's, like, significant turnover on the committee?
Well, that's a different story, right? But again, you just, it, things have to be settled, it's hard for the community, a school community, to have a lot of flip flopping, right?
It makes sense, I understand that.
Right, in curriculum, if you adopt curriculum A, and new school committee members come on and want curriculum B instead. Well, the teachers have just, and if you change it back to B, and then the new committee comes out and they're gonna have something different. No one's gonna get invested in these changes and these initiatives, it's not, it's not good for the district as a whole, to have a lot of disruption, right? Uh, but. There is, there is no obligation for the chair to put this on there, that's why you got this one on the low. Didn't finance, is the chair of the town of best finance committee? He is a CPA by profession, and a believer in planning ahead for all contingencies, including reductions in state and federal funds for the town and the schools. He believes that the best school committee budget is loaded and should be trimmed. And the budget should include an amount set aside each year for unanticipated expenses and contingencies. He attends every meeting of the best school committee, where the budget's discussed, and in between meetings, he contacts the best school district's school business administrator. New York place, that would be Mike, um, to give the school business administrator direction on what to reduce in the budget. The best school committee chair hears about this, what should the chair do?
So.
Yeah, well, because it doesn't really involve the school committee. Except as a member of the public, I would just inform superintendent that, that, you know, these conversations are going.
Right, um, and would, would Mike be obligated to follow what the, um, captain finance wants him to do? No, it can.
The chair should call chair of finance committee and say, don't do this.
Or the, or the.
Or the town administrator. Or the select board chair.
Stay in your lane. We, this, and decides budget reductions are made by school committee, not by anybody else. All right, the best school committee has had some difficulties in retaining a human resources director. They frequently get candidates in the private sector, but they have no experience with school law. Best school committee member Gala approaches Maduela manager, the best town manager. And suggests that the town take over the school human resources function. The town manager likes this idea and attends the next best school committee meeting with a proposal to take over H R, I T, and facilities. The proposal also includes a reduction to the school committee's budget to correspond to the employees that the town will supervise and pay under this plan. The best school committee is surprised by the proposal, and the town manager is furious that she spent hours preparing a proposal. But the school committee didn't request, and apparently is not interested in it, what should Gala have done differently?
Oh, um, not, don't do that.
But, but, let's say she, we can't get on H R.
Put it on the agenda.
Put it on the agenda.
Well, talk to superintendent.
There's, there's a section of the law, uh, chapter seventy-one, section thirty-seven, M is a Michael. Um, that people don't usually look at very often, but it does allow us to consolidate certain things with the town. Something, some districts do it with I T, some districts do it with H R, some districts do it with, um, with the facilities, uh, but. That's a decision of the school committee, not any one individual member, so if an individual member wants to make changes, they need. Convince the committee, this is the way to go, the committee needs to be on board, they shouldn't be like the madman that goes out and tries to do it on their own. All it does is upset everybody, because the town, the lies, this scenario that the school committee didn't want it. All right, setting goals, and I know we talked about that with, uh, M A S D today, you have to focus the district, and it focuses our administration. So what are our goals, our performance, the community, and employees about change the district will be making over time. And enables us to identify changes in the collective bargaining agreement that present barriers or feedbacks to achieving those goals, right? We need to know where you're headed, what you want to do, in order to figure out how to get there, and to eliminate some of the barriers that might exist. You appoint personnel, uh, you appoint the superintendent, the school business administrator, that's Mike's job. The administrator of special education, that one, uh, you do not need the superintendent's recommendation for, although it is very. Best practice is to get it, the law does not require it, because they forgot, when it did, it was, I'm glad to grab that one, because it was not in chapter seventy-one. It was chapter seventy-one B, so the legislator's just, that's why, you appoint legal counsel. The school physicians and the registered nurses, although the nurses are really covered by collective bargaining agreement now, but when you sign that agreement, you're supposed to appoint them. Supervisor and attendants, that's the person who takes care of truancy, and all of your assistant or associate superintendents. Upon the recognition of superintendent, so those, all of those other assistant superintendents, you cannot appoint without the superintendent's recommendation. And if you, if you decline to appoint someone he's recommended, he can ask for the reasons why. But remember, even for the positions, the first three, um, on the list. You can appoint them, but superintendent, like the business administrator and the administrative specialist, the superintendent can fire anybody in the district. Anybody who's appointed the district, so let's all do this in a cooperative way. So for the committee, you appoint those three members, those three positions, superintendent, school business administrator, administrator, specialist. Uh, when you do that, the committee determines the wages and other terms and conditions of employment, and you actually sign the contracts. Uh, if you, your deliberation regarding that, those, those compensation packages happens in executive session. Principals and other administrators are appointed by the superintendent, you have no role in those, um, and. The superintendent will determine the benefits and compensation, and those have to be consistent with committee policy. So if you have no policy, John is a free for all, no limits. And you have policies that say, you know, schools of this size, you know, here's a range, I wouldn't have specific amounts, but ranges. Or, you know, this many days of vacation, something like that, you could have, you could have policies that also make it a little bit easier. For, um, for John to negotiate with the principals. All right, so we're gonna do, uh, again, John, you're gonna get a twenty all by yourself. Uh, twenty-one is going to be, um, ten. And Henry, twenty-two is going to be take by yourself, and twenty-three is going to be, uh, out by itself.
There's nothing somebody needs to. No, seriously.
Well, that's what I understood about. I didn't know if that was unique to Marblehead.
All right, ready for twenty? Ms. Portland, the chair of the best school committee and longtime member of Mad mothers against drunk driving. Believes that every school administrator should be a role model for students. She heard that Amy, an administrator and assistant principal in the best public school, was stopped on Cape Cod last Saturday night driving eighty-five miles per hour. And may have been charged with driving under the influence of alcohol. This Portland wants to take action. What can't she do and what can't she do?
I know she's kind of want action, but, um, I mean, she could let the superintendent know.
Exactly. That's what she should.
But that's, that's where they sent them in the sort of the superintendent to follow, follow up with any possible repercussions.
That's right. It's the superintendent's job to discipline, it, it does that. But if she heard about this, it makes sense for her to tell the superintendent. So when the local media calls the superintendent and says, hey, heard that the assistant principal was stopped going eighty-five miles per hour at, on Cape Cod drunk driving. The superintendent is not blindsided. So important for us.
What are the requirements of the superintendent, basically, if someone has been charged with a crime?
The superintendent will call council usually, will discuss what options the superintendent has. Sometimes it's paid administrative leave so we can find out what's actually happened. Sometimes it's, um, depending on what it is, um, you know, I would say it's often paid administrative leave, but then some kind of discipline. Of course, this might be off duty conduct, it might be a different, a different person. Like, we don't always know, people hear things, not always accurate, but we would check it out. And we, and we, and the superintendent, not the school committee, addresses the discipline. Barry S. Thor, Barry S. Thor is the chair of the best, that's the select board. He has not been pleased with the resources required to fund the schools, and his partner was Finn Finance. The chair of the best financing committee. Barry and Finn proposed that the select board adopt a policy requiring the school committee submit its line item budget for the following fiscal year to the select board for approval. Prior to placing it on the warrant for town meeting. The select board adopted the policy, and for the best school committee, the select board will now be treating the school committee budget like any other town budget that's, that it needs select board approval. What should the school committee do?
Technically, school committee doesn't have to do anything.
That's not have to, but it probably should do something. What would you like to do?
Probably have the chair and the superintendent. The chair probably speak to the chair of select board, say.
And if that doesn't work, maybe have your council ethical letter that says, stay in your lane.
That would be the next step.
Stay in your lane. You do not have the authority to do this. In fact, while the town's budgets, including their collective bargaining agreements individually, have to be approved at town meeting. You get bottom lines, the only thing that they prove, they might ask questions about how you got to that bottom line. They can make recommendations on how you use your money, but it's not binding. Bottom line is yours, and you choose how to spend it. Empire is a member of the best school committee. Yesterday at a local grocery store. He heard from Peggy parent that there had been lots of kids injured at the best elementary playground, and that one student left in an ambulance. Empire was upset, left a cart of groceries, got the car, drove to the best elementary school. Empire walked around the playground, which was empty because of the rain, then went into the school and demanded to talk to the principal. What should the principal do?
The principal should involve the superintendent, because that's what the conversation should be.
Well, the principal should say, you don't have an appointment, uh, you're, you're not here. If, if you're here as a school committee member, no, as school committee members have no role at all, except when they're sitting at a meeting, right? They don't get to, or subcommittee, but they can't just come in and demand speak to the principal. What should Empire have done?
It means school committee should never reach out to a principal.
Right. They should not be without the principal. They should not do that. They should, Empire should have said, I'd like to put playground safety and injuries on the agenda. Give the superintendent time to get the data, how many kids were injured, the kids seem perfect. Um, especially some of the new ones.
So the, the member could speak to superintendent.
Yeah, they could tell him about it. Absolutely. Um, but you know, kids break arms and wrists and things on playgrounds all the time. Um, in fact, I took my grandchildren to a, to my daughters, though she went to elementary school. I expected to see a new playground, was the one I helped build as a parent. There was this climbing thing, it was like, like, um, like a spider web going all the way around. It's like two and a half stories high. And nobody had any helmets on or anything, and my stomach was up in my throat, and I was, oh. But everybody got up and down like it was nothing. It was the most amazing thing. The kids had so much fun, scared me like anything. But anyway, yes, playgrounds have changed. That's what I could say.
Uh, but before anyone panics, the one putting their gloves is much shorter. Same thing, though, I'm sure.
Two stories spider web.
Be six inches high.
Are you pulling in one of those?
Yeah.
What do they call?
I, I don't know. I don't know if they have a specific name.
There's one slider, one out there.
Yeah, there's one out here too. Sure one. You, you get them like you're supposed, there's supposed to be like each property.
It wasn't appropriate. They, they climbed up like nothing, but I just couldn't believe it. All right, so Empire addressed playground issues, safety issues at the school committee meeting. And then, you know, he started going with it. It's not abnormal to have kids fall off of piece of equipment and break something. And, all right. Mr. Fuji, a school committee member, was raping his leaves when his neighbor Paul parents told him that his daughter was upset because she would not be able to take music appreciation and calculus one. Paul said he heard that the superintendent was changing the high school schedule and that the art and music classes were offered at the same time as the physics and calculus classes. Making it impossible for students to take music and art as well as physics and higher level math classes. Paul said he and other parents were very upset about this change. How should Mr. Fuji respond?
Uh, I think by first stating this is not within the purview of the school committee. Uh, and then maybe suggest that maybe talks to the high school principal about this matter.
You do that, that's fine. I mean, you select the curriculum, but you don't decide what time of day it's all offered. And if anyone's ever looked at how they managed to do a high school schedule, it is, it is, uh, it, I, I don't know how they do it. It is amazing to me how they managed to get every kid in enough classes, and it's, it's amazing. But, um, there are always going to be some classes that conflict with others, but, and that happens. All right, communications by the committee, this one with administrators, council, and community members. Those school committees' positions determined by a vote at a properly posted meeting. You can't confer with the committee speaking, you can't say, I, I believe things that, you know, Harry, Kate, and Jen would support this. No, if it didn't happen at a school committee meeting, if there wasn't a vote or a consensus taken there, we don't know how the school committee would. The spokesperson communicates the official committee positions in compliance with the committee or the district policy. So the other policy says the chair, I think that is the policy here, is not, but the chair, uh, is the spokesperson for the committee. That person, a, as I said before, reports how the committee's view of something. Even if it's not the chair's personal view, other committee members should note that they are not speaking.
Can I make another, ask a question about that?
Yeah.
That, that's the role of the chair. It, that is our policy, but the chair has to have knowledge of that.
Knowledge come from the vote at the meeting.
Right, so if there hadn't been, you know, the words of a chair is asked a question about something that had not been deliberated on. The chair is in, is not able to comment.
No, I'm able to comment on the committee's official position because they don't have one. Easy enough. It's not, it's not no comment I want to tell you. It's, I cannot respond because the committee has not taken a position on that by vote yet. Uh, you can say your own personal view, but I'm not speaking on behalf of the committee. All of you have, don't give up your rights to have a view. So if a committee member could be viewed as speaking on behalf of the committee, remember to inform the audience wherever you're speaking. I'm speaking as an individual and not on behalf of the committee. The committee speaks by vote. It's important when you, especially if your view is not the same with the committee's. Communication with administrators. So, school committee communicates its policies and directives to the superintendent and the business manager. The superintendent and business manager report and receive direction from you as a whole, not from individuals, but as a whole. And the superintendent can also give directions to the business manager. Other administrators take their direction from the superintendent. So let's be clear about that. You don't go talking to the other administrators and telling them what you want them to do.
So just interesting, it's, it's interesting that we hire, you know, a special education person. But that role is not covered, is not talked about here.
No, because, because you, the budget one, I mean, you, you would give direction to a budget person, because that, that's, all of your money is there, right? Um, but even that, the superintendent gives that person direction too. Uh, but the others, you hire the superintendent, you let the superintendent do their job. When I left after six years, one of the reporters asked me what was the most important thing I did at my school. And I think he was thinking, well, we dished on this building, renovated this school. And I said, I hired the right superintendent, let him do his job, right? Because even if I have an education background, we are hiring experts to do the job that we want them to do. If you're not happy with the job, then you replace them, but you don't try to do that job, especially since sometimes we can get five people to agree on anything. So having a superintendent has to have the direction from the committee as a whole, because we try to take direction from each of you. It would be different direction sometimes. So. Communication with legal counsel. Now, this is important because in my experience with Marblehead, and then any of my other districts is that you want the requests of a legal advice to come from the committee, to come through the chair. Because if each of you call me, then that raises your cost, and we, we don't need to raise your cost. I paid the legal fees when I was on my school committee. I try not to increase fees by that, right? So you may be asking the question, especially as a new member, that may have been addressed by a prior legal opinion that the chair would have and could share with you, right? So it makes sense to always go through the chair. Uh, if the chair authorizes you to call, that's okay too. But I always ask that question. So if Kate calls me and says, Liz, I need to know this, is this legal? I would say, Kate, did you get authorization from L? Because otherwise, we have everybody calling, and then you just bills and say, what's this all about? Not a good idea. Uh, the superintendent has the authority always to call, because we help the superintendent on, on personnel matters, usually in some other matters sometimes. Uh, so, but remember, we, we, legal counsel represents you as a whole, committee as a whole, not individual members. Which is why I told you about the state ethics commission, because they will help individual members at no cost. But you can call me and ask me which disclosure are you supposed to use, and I can find that for you. Or you can call them, and they can give you for free. Communications with community members, uh, from community members. You follow the district policies and procedures. Remember, the community only takes action by vote. And if the information is properly, a matter of administration informed the superintendent, right? I don't like my superintendent's blindsided. We're all a team here. So if you know about something, or you know someone's going to come and ask you something, or there's a parent group upset about something. Give them a heads up. Don't have, it's his decision how to deal with it, but at least give them a heads up, and I imagine you want those heads up, John.
Yeah, I think I would actually been really good about that, so I appreciate those more also.
Uh, and then always follow the chain of command. Sometimes, especially in small communities, I live in a small community too. And one of the things is everybody knows everyone, right? So if they know me, they might come up and help me fix their problem. No, no. Like, I even had an art teacher once stop me in the middle of grocery store. I'm like, no, this is not the place for this, right? No, there's a chain of command. You've got an issue, talk to your principal, talk to the superintendent, don't keep talking to me. Like, there's a chain of command, follow it. Same thing like when I said, when they ask you for information on public records, records access officer. Follow the chain of command, follow the individual rules. It's a whole lot better. You don't need more work to do. And remember, you cannot disclose any confidential information from executive sessions. All right, so you're gonna follow your policies in the chain of command, direct employees to their supervisors if they come to talk to you. Because we're in a small community, if people see you and they, here's a, you can fix this. All right, uh, let's see, twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six. So you two are gonna be Alan, Kate twenty-four, um, Henry twenty-five by itself, and twenty-six is Jen and Ken Dunn. We're gonna run over a little bit of the two hours, because I only started a little earlier, but still as close to as a point, so you're all right. Okay.
Yeah, I think that's, that's fine.
Good. All right, twenty-four. A school committee member Empire wants budget information from Barry Business, the business manager, the person in Mike's job. Empire wants the information sorted differently, requests a different format for the budget information. And wants to schedule a two-hour meeting with Barry at four P M. on the last Friday of each month to review the budget and expenses to be. Barry has been producing the information in a format directed by the school committee. The format that Empire is requesting would require many hours of additional time to prepare for the purchase of an expensive new software license. Barry calls the chair of the committee and asks, what should you do? Go ahead, Dan.
So I, I think we did, um. I think it could be put on an agenda item at a next meeting to see if, you know, perhaps what Barry is asking for is a very appropriate thing.
Whatever Barry's asking for, right?
I'm sorry, the, the lone person asking, um. And if so, that's fine. It's a, you know, something the committee is asking for. If not, then, uh, I would instruct, uh, the person not to do the work, the finance committee, the finance person.
Can't go to Barry and say, I want you to do this differently. Barry has, the only way Barry's gonna do it differently is if the committee tells him to do it differently as a whole. And the committee has to decide, do I have the money for the software? Do I need training to use the software? How much additional time is gonna come, and what is it gonna, what value add is it gonna give me? Because if it's not, it's just because, hey, Empire's used to looking at spreadsheets that way as opposed to this one, too bad, right? So none of you have the right to tell Mike individually to do something, or the superintendent, do something differently. It's the committee that does that as a whole. Ms. Gala, a school committee member is upset that Principal Fair did not assign her child to Wendy Wonderful's classroom for this upcoming school year. I can tell you this happens every school year. Gala went to Fair's office in the best elementary school and demanded to meet with Fair. She did not have an appointment, but said in the loud voice, I'm his boss, I'm on the school committee. Fair told Gala that she should make an appointment if she wants to talk to him about her child's placement. Gala called the superintendent and said she wanted the superintendent to fire Fair. What should the superintendent do?
Not that.
Not that.
Yeah, um, I would probably talk to the school committee member. I would reaffirm with the, with the, um, with the principal that, that superintendent supports.
And is this a violation of the state ethics law?
Yeah.
It absolutely is. You can't just splash your super, I'm on the school committee, so I get my Wendy wonderful.
Yeah, well, she's not the boss of the principal.
She is not. She is nobody right now. She's a parent.
That's true, yeah. Not, yeah.
She can follow the same procedures any other parent can follow with respect to the assignment. And I've noticed that, uh, assignments, but maybe here is different, I don't know. But my grandchildren have yet to find out who they're getting next year, and I think that's a really wise thing. They don't tell the kids to like ten seconds before they're gonna leave the teacher. So there's no complaining all summer long.
Quick question, this goes back to an earlier one, but it, it's still, no, no, similar to this twenty-five, yeah. For, for conflict, if you had a, if we're back to that thing about the, the budget going through the select board. If a select board member or another elected board member comes to a school committee member and says, I want you to vote for this, or vote a certain way, is that?
No, different than anybody.
But that's not a conflict for them.
That, no, and it's not a conflict, it's, it's, no different than any other.
But it's not a conflict for them to do that, try to affect that. Okay, got it.
Ms. Portland is the spokesperson for the best public school. She is the chair of the committee. On Tuesday, committee had to follow the procedures for reasons, you know, these elementary schools voted to change the district lines. The local newspaper called Portland on Wednesday morning to get information and comments on the new district lines. What Portland say?
Is she on whatever the, um, committee side?
Exactly, whatever the vote was. She's authorized to speak. She can tell. Exactly, whatever the vote was. She's authorized to speak. She can tell them what the vote was, she can explain the new committee lines, the new district lines, and that's, that's it. Alright. Communications by the committee with unionized employees and avoiding who else these are unfair labor practice charges and direct dealing. We do not want to commit costing money to defend these case. Year and a half, two years to get them out of the partner labor relations. We just don't want to have violations of this. And believe me, if you do this, the union will not forgive you that. I'll at least file a charge. Let's not. What is an unfairly practice charge? It's retaliation for engaging in union activity. So protecting things like informational picketing, having a union meeting for wearing their pants, interfering, restraining or coercive union in its rights, failure to barb in good faith, well, they always say that. Failure to negotiate with respect to terms and conditions of employment, failure to provide relevant and reasonable information. I have had school committee members say, the union wants information about our budget. And I say, I can have information about your budget. It's like, if, if you can tell that, you should, you should share all of that information because frankly, they need to know where you're coming from. So a direct dealing, going around the union leadership directly to employees. Those are all the kinds of charges that they can file. Remember, when you speak, especially to a unionized employee, you, even though you might be speaking as a parent, you might think of yourself as a parent or a community member, they see you speaking as a member of the school committee. And it doesn't matter that you're not a quorum, doesn't matter that you say it's your personal view, they will file a charge. So don't negotiate with individual employees represented by a union. Now, promise things that you can do. Don't take actions or make statements that chill, that's the legal word that they use, chill them and the exercise of their rights protected by law. And our state has lots of union protected rights. Alright, we have twenty-seven and twenty-eight. So we're gonna do Henry, Kate now for twenty-seven and Jen and John for twenty-eight. And we're almost done. The world finishing. It was two hours, but give it some.
Sketches, but. Yeah. What, all of these are like, just would.
I made up the names, not the scenarios.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It's scary, isn't it?
Yeah. Yeah, although I'm honestly not surprised that, that these aren't made up.
I'm not that great. I'll just change the names. Alright, Empire is on the best school committee and hires not pleased that teachers have decided not to take classes on the traditional overnight field trip in Camp Clever because the best association of teachers, B A T, is engaged in work to rule, which is I only do it's my contract or my job description. It supposedly has practice, but we'll see about that. Other contract negotiations. Empire has been friends with Tom teachers since they were children. Tom is not a B A T officer and doesn't sit at the bargaining table for B A T. Tom is popular and well-respected among teachers in the best public schools. Empire asked Tom to talk to teachers about taking students to Camp Clever and ignoring the union's directive not to volunteer for any overnight field visits. Why or why not?
He can't.
Can't, no, because it will be seen as go, direct dealing, right? On going around the union leadership to individual employees and asking them to do that. Empire, as school committee member, used a private email to send a message to all school department employees, including Gina Greven, the high school teacher who is leading the campaign not to go to Camp Clever. Empire's email said, I support all of our teachers who are putting our students first. Bravo to those teachers who take students to Camp Clever this year. For those of you who don't go, we have you on our list. Empire stated, I'm not speaking for the best school committee, but when the local newspaper printed Empire's email, the paper noted that Empire is a school committee member. Any issues with Empire's email?
Everything.
Everything. He was doing what?
Chilling.
Chilling, chilling.
What if that last sentence were not there?
Oh, the last sentence?
Second sentence.
Bravo to those teachers who take students.
No, it's right, the third sentence, the last sentence.
And for those of you who don't go, we have you on your list. Well, it would be better not to have that, but I still think it's chilling to say, I support all of our teachers who are putting our students first, because it implies that the unions aren't putting their students, other members aren't putting their students first. And bravo to those, it, it's still gonna sound chilling. Department of Labor Relations will find that chilling, especially coming from a school committee member. But if it come from an individual in the public, absolutely, people, parents could say that, but not school committee members. So you say it. There's going to be litigation about it and we are going to be found to have engaged in chilling.
I don't know how you email all. Anyway.
Okay, any hypothetical questions or hypothetical answers for training purposes?
Back to executive session. I think it was purpose one. So if an individual brings litigation against a school committee and the school committee is meeting an executive, it's been maybe advised, you know, you need to meet an executive session to discuss this. Were you saying that that person who filed has to also be invited?
No, no, no. So purpose one is if I'm gonna discipline someone or maybe, maybe we have a contract that says people get this much leave, but somebody has an extraordinary situation, right? The litigation strategy, no, they don't get to be there.
Okay.
Absolutely not. Any other questions? You guys have been sitting here for a really long time. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Liz.
Yeah, you have to remember it. If you're done, this is the last item on your agenda, to make sure you take your vote to.
Yes. So we do have new business and correspondence on the agenda. Does anyone have any items for that? Alright, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Alright, Jen?
Favor.
Henry?
Favor.
Hey?
In favor.
Al, in favor. Motion passes unanimously. We are adjourned.
I think we have to vote to adjourn. Liz, we have to vote to adjourn.
You always.
I thought you didn't have to unless it was in a executive session.
So we wrote to adjourn. And we were adjourned.
We are, no, we are adjourned.
We're still on.